museum when it opens for tours next month. In San Pedro Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The battleship Iowa will open to the public on July 7th. Tickets are now on sale, eighteen dollars for adults, ten dollars for children. And the euphoria of the Kings victory still envelops our city. Cindy San Luis took us to the victory party where the Kings celebrated with fans, old and new.
Go Kings, go! Go Kings, go!
It's been forty-five years in the making, so diehard Los Angeles Kings fans came out in droves to celebrate the franchise's first ever championship.
I'm really excited. It's a good feeling for them, too. I just feel so proud for them.
Matea Merrick joined an estimated quarter of a million people to give the LA Kings the royal treatment.
We're all here supporting this great, great parade, this great victory of the Kings. Say something.
I've been waiting since Rogie Vaschan was the goalie to finally see the Kings win it, and this is it.
And the Kings are grateful to their fans for rooting for them throughout the years.
I think it might hit you a bit when you got out there and you know, you see all the support we've had for forty-five years.
There's a lot of people out there and they deserve it. It's been a long wait.
Just to see the joy in their faces for what they've accomplished in terms of the price they've had to pay and to see that makes me happy.
The Kings greeted fans as they rode buses and flatbed trucks in a parade through downtown Los Angeles.
Tears of joy when we took it. It was unbelievable. Just, I, I, it's so hard to believe that we're the Stanley Cup champions.
And for Sean Tierney, who was at game six of the Stanley Cup Finals, where the LA Kings beat the New Jersey Devils and claimed the championship, this parade was not to be missed.
So what are you expecting to see today?
The cup. That's what we're here to see. Because of the cup, we're the champs.
For the first time in Los Angeles history, the Stanley Cup is here, and it's with the King of Kings, the LA Kings.
This is a long time coming, and we want this for you guys.
And for both the LA Kings and their thousands of fans, the wait was well worth it. From the Staples Center, I'm Cindy San Luis for LA this week.
Again, a big congratulations to the Kings, the first Stanley Cup in their franchise's history. And can a car dealership really help green the environment? One car dealership in Van Nuys is trying to prove that it can. Anna Marcos explains.
A pair of gold scissors for the mayor, a gift to symbolize he knows how to cut through the red tape when it comes to getting business going in LA. Mayor Antonio Villarogosa got a tour of the Keys European Car Dealership in Van Nuys. The dealership expanded and added a whole new building, thanks to help from the mayor's office, as well as tax breaks. And business at the twenty-year-old dealership is booming.
We are the second-largest Mercedes-Benz dealership in volume, not in Los Angeles, not in Southern California, not in California, but in the entire United States, right here in Van Nuys.
When a study showed car dealers hard-hit by the recession were leaving LA, city leaders gave them a break on the gross receipts tax. Businesses are getting a break on the business tax as well.
When, in the middle of the recession, we realized that we weren't doing enough to bring businesses in town, we declared a business tax holiday for three years. And we're extending that business tax holiday for another three years, at least through the recession.
This facility has hired twenty-three new workers and plans to hire thirty more in the next eighteen months. That's more jobs for Los Angeles.
Keys Automotive is getting an economic boost, but there's an environmental boost as well. The car dealership has installed close to an acre of solar panels, enough to generate almost half a million kilowatts of electricity a year.
Environmental sustainability can be good for business. On the roof of this building, we have a tremendous array of solar panels, there's LEED-certified architecture, we have water efficiency, energy efficiency, and that, they're doing that because it's good for business, as well as good for the environment.
Keys Automotive gets a million-dollar rebate check from the DWP for helping to green the environment, proof that business and the environment can really work together. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The rebate check is part of LA DWP's Solar Incentives Program, which provides a one-time incentive payment to residents and business owners who install solar panels on their property. And a large check also went out to a project aimed at bringing the arts here to the Broadway Historic Theater and Commercial District, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. While retail stores and restaurants and even historic theaters have gotten all the attention lately, there are also plans to build the Broadway Arts Center, a mixed-use development containing a theater, art gallery, and affordable housing for artists. The exact location is yet to be determined.
To help the city make this project come true, Art Place, which assists communities with strategic investments in the arts, has just given the city's Department of Cultural Affairs four-hundred-seventy thousand dollars in grant money for pre-development work. The announcement was made inside the entrance of the historic Los Angeles Theater.
We, with the benefit of the funding that's being announced today, are going to jump right into the process of identifying potential sites, evaluating those sites, and hopefully within the next six months, zeroing in on a particular site, so we can move forward.
Some of the Broadway Arts Center partners, including Cornerstone Theater Company, Psy Art, and the Esperanza Community Housing Corporation, are also receiving Art Place support. And the mayor's partnership schools also received a bit of windfall, seven-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars to be exact. Gil Reyes tells us where that money came from, how it will be used to help students, and if more donations may follow.
I believe that Eagles are.
Markham Middle School in Watts celebrating a big donation, money that will fund new interactive software for math, also mentoring and tutoring programs.
This seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar donation is an effort to lift up our kids, particularly in math and reading.
The seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar gift courtesy of One West Bank. The bank is supporting the mayor's partnership schools. These are some of LA's poorest performing campuses that the city has now taken under its wing to improve. It uses a combination approach, including these mentors and tutors from the group City Year. The partnership also conducts workshops for parents to better involve them in their child's learning. And now, yet another innovation at the partnership, computerized interactive math puzzles used at Markham.
This is the simplest, most direct way for students to be sure that they understand math concepts and not just meaningless stuff that they're memorizing.
And with One West Bank's big donation, the call goes out to other corporations to contribute as well.
Wells Fargo, DirecTV, Target, you know, these folks have all been big fans of our Fox Sports West, so we're always reaching out to as many people as possible. AT&amp;T does a lot of work in education, we'd love for them to be doing some work with the partnership.
I think the idea is to turn what was a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar gift into a seven-and-a-half-million-dollar gift, and the mayor and me and others are committed to reach out to people and see that happen.
The partnership says every corporation and wealthy person conducting business in LA should contribute to local education. In Watts, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Turning to the city controller's latest audit, which reveals that a city program designed to help minority-owned businesses isn't doing its job. Rasha Goel reports.
Carmen Rad is a successful small business owner. She runs CR&amp;A Custom Incorporated, a large format printing company in downtown Los Angeles. A wall of accolades, thirty-one employees, and a long client list are the results of her hard work.
I love being in the city of LA. The city of LA has been really good to me, and I've been in business for a long time.
While Rad says business is good, not all minority or women-owned businesses in the city of LA can say the same. An audit by LA City Controller Wendy Grohl found that the city's Minority and Women Enterprise Contracting Program, which was designed to help underrepresented groups compete for city contracts, needed improvement.
I have found that the city currently has a two-year backlog of certification requests for women and minority-owned businesses, causing small businesses to potentially lose out as much as a hundred million dollars in contracts that they are unable to compete for. Not enough has been done to support and proactively support and help minority and women-owned businesses compete for contracts and jobs.
Local business leaders say the city should ensure that everyone has the same access to quality job opportunities. The city offers bids on opportunities ranging from construction projects to food services to office supplies.
The city council needs to really look at this and put pressure on these departments and make sure that they're giving these opportunities that they're supposed to do.
We really do need these opportunities to grow our businesses.
Business owners such as Carmen Rad also say that while the city is doing their part, it is up to business owners to be proactive and persistent when it comes to their businesses. In the meantime, this audit will be sent for review to the mayor and city council. From downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Actress Betty White has finally arrived. We'll explain a big check for a charity that feeds the less fortunate and a bike rodeo that's nineteen years old and going strong. These stories and more in City Beats.
Actress and animal advocate Betty White stood still for the paparazzi. Or did she? Actually, that's an uncanny wax figure in her likeness recently unveiled at Madame Tussaud's Hollywood, and who, other than Mr. LA, Councilman Tom Labonge was on hand to celebrate the occasion.
Betty White, the greatest ambassador of all, a great friend of the city of Los Angeles, the Los Angeles Zoo, and now she's here every day and every night, twenty-four hours a day at Madame Tussaud's here in the heart of Hollywood. Betty, it's great to have you here. You look fabulous.
Betty White's wax figure joins that of Elizabeth Taylor's, Clint Eastwood's, and other Hollywood greats. St. Vincent's Meals on Wheels received a charitable check in the amount of four-hundred-thousand dollars from the Los Angeles Food and Wine Festival. The second annual Los Angeles Food and Wine Festival will take place at the beginning of August and feature seminars, tastings, as well as over one hundred of the nation's most esteemed chefs. St. Vincent's will also receive a portion of the festival's proceeds. The Palms Neighborhood Council hosted its nineteenth annual Palms Bike Rodeo on a recent Saturday at Palms Elementary School. LAPD officers were on hand to teach kids about bike safety. The family-friendly event also featured a bike auction, as well as arts and crafts activities.
We put this event together every year to encourage bike safety, to encourage people to actually ride their bikes, for all the benefits that come from that. And also, our neighborhood is very congested, so we try to encourage people to bike more.
It's just perfect for the kids because they have a lot of opportunity to interact with the community.
The Palms area and Councilman Paul Coretza's district has had a long history with biking. The first-in-the-nation BMX event was held at Palms Recreation on Overland Avenue in the nineteen-sixties. If you live in the West Valley and need help opening a new business, help is here in the form of the newly-opened Resita Branch of the Los Angeles Business Source Center. A program of the mayor's office, the Business Source Center, provides startup ventures and small business owners cost-effective tools to help their business grow and remain competitive. The nonprofit Valley Economic Development Center, or VEDC, which has a long history assisting job seekers and small businesses, received a grant from the city to operate this new office.
And as we told you earlier, we've taken LA this week on the road to Councilman Jose Wezar's Broadway Historic Corridor. And over my right shoulder is one of the restaurants we told you about earlier, Umami Cateson, which opened up not too long ago as part of the Renaissance that's taking place here. But another corner of Councilman Wezar's district is also getting some much-needed sprucing up. Thanks to new state funding, Highland Park will get new park space for kids and families to play. Anna Marcos reports.
It was a festive crowd that celebrated in Highland Park. The reason: one more piece of neglected inner-city turf at this corner of York Boulevard and Avenue Fifty will soon become a Green Pocket Park.
This shows that persistence pays off, that we should never give up in trying to improve our community, and it is because of the community's loud voice that we have received funding.
Community members worked with Councilmember Jose Wezar's office to get close to three million in funding from Proposition Eighty-Four, a state measure that allocates money for more parks and open space in hard-hit urban areas like Highland Park. State Senator Kevin DeLeón authored the measure.
During the course of my campaign, when I walked in Highland Park, when I walked in Lincoln Heights and El Sereno and City Terrace and other places, Echo Park, there was a dearth of green parks and open space. Parks belong to everybody, regardless of the color of your skin, regardless of where you come from.
The York Boulevard and Avenue Fifty Pocket Park is just part of the York Vision Plan, a project by Councilmember Jose Wezar's office to improve the area with more bike lanes and pedestrian-friendly features.
I think it's great for the community. I have a business here, I have a home here and a family, and I'm very excited about it.
I have business here. I live here, so I want it to be nice.
The greening of LA takes another step, as another piece of neglected turf grows some grass. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The Highland Park Pocket Park is just one of two City of LA projects to receive money from Prop Eighty-Four in this round of funding. Well, if you're just joining us, we have taken LA this week on the road this week, as you can see, here to the historic Broadway Corridor downtown, to highlight some of the many exciting things happening here. So if you haven't come down to Broadway recently, come and check out the restaurants or take a tour of the architecture. It is beautiful down here. And here again are some other things to do in other parts of our city.
If you've ever found yourself singing songs from The Little Mermaid in your shower, this is the event for you. Join in with hundreds of your fellow Angelinos to belt out popular and classic tunes at the Friday Night Sing-Alongs hosted by the Walt Disney Concert Hall. The next sing-along on Friday, June twenty-second, is of Disney favorites. The free event takes place from six-thirty to eight PM, but you do have to line up for tickets, which are distributed starting at six PM on a first-come, first-served basis. No experience necessary, and song sheets are provided. The Walt Disney Concert Hall is located at 111 South Grand Avenue downtown. More info can be found at musiccenter.org. Join New Horizons for their annual Walk on the Horizon 5K Walk to help make a difference in the lives of adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The walk takes place Saturday, June twenty-third, at Woodley Park, located at sixty-three-fifty Woodley Avenue in Van Nuys. The event will feature a 5K run at eight-thirty AM and a non-competitive walk around the park at nine AM, followed by an awards celebration with food and live music. For more information on Walk on the Horizon or to register, visit newhorizons-sfv.org/walk. The Department of Public Works Bureau of Sanitation will be hosting its Discover Recycling Open House on Saturday, June twenty-third, at the Harbor District Yard, located at fourteen-hundred North Gaffey Street in San Pedro. The event will be held from nine AM to two-thirty PM. The event invites residents of all ages to meet sanitation collection truck drivers and staff, enjoy truck demonstrations and facility tours. You can also drop off your old unwanted tires at this event. Go to bureauofsanitationopenhouses.blogspot.com for more info. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
Earlier, we showed you some of the new businesses that have taken up residence here on Broadway, including Umami Cateson behind me, as well as what will be the new Torina Tarantino Design Headquarters and the Ace Hotel, both on the nine-hundred block of Broadway, to the old Clifton's Cafeteria on the six-hundred block, which is currently undergoing a makeover. But now, we introduce you to yet another store to take up residence here on Broadway, a convenience store to be exact, but one that's redefining food on the go.
From Japan to downtown LA, Famima is a chain of upscale convenience stores that's part of the Japanese-owned Family Mart stores. This newly-opened branch here at the historic Spring Arcade Building is just the latest in a string of businesses trying to get in on the ground floor, so to speak, in what many believe is the start of something big here on Broadway.
It has about twelve historic theaters, beautiful shopping areas, also beautiful architecture, and this is a place where people came to get entertained and do their shopping. But throughout the years, it's had its challenges. At nighttime, this place, I must say, was a ghost town because the last year or so is coming back to life. And through our efforts to improve the streetscape and landscape and make, pass laws that make it easier for building owners to convert their properties, we're getting the results we would like to see.
Jumping at the chance to be a part of the area's unquestionable revitalization, Famima plans to operate the eighteen-hundred-square-foot space at the Arcade Building twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And Famima is not your typical convenience store selling only food in air-vacuumed bags.
Salad, good stuff.
There are salads, sushi rolls, and fresh fruit to choose from, proving that food on the go doesn't have to be bad for you. But of course, there are still your convenience store staples, like coffee, tea, and sweet treats.
It's always good to have options, you know? And you know what? I don't think you'd see that in the past, where you have fruits and vegetables. Before, it was just potato chips and soda. Now you get different options to have healthy lifestyles.
Famima is hoping to cash in on the appetite for change here on Broadway.
We really saw what was happening on Broadway, and I targeted this area. We targeted this area, and I said, I want a store somewhere between Fifth and Seventh Streets on Broadway. When that gets going, we're ready to start working our way along Broadway and the rest of this downtown area. But we love the Broadway and what was happening out here.
And what's going on is just the start of many more things to come.
We also have Figaro Bistro coming in, a popular restaurant in Silver Lake that has decided to call Broadway its home. And Ross Dress for Less, the first major retailer, is coming back to the old, the old Worldworth Building.
Winds of change on Broadway, bringing together the old and the new, in the hopes of making history once again.
The Arcade Building is located in the five-hundred block of Broadway, and as you can see over my right shoulder, Two Boots Pizza from New York also recently opened up a branch here in the eight-hundred block of Broadway, right next to the Orpheum Theater. Well, that's going to do it for this special on-location episode of LA this week, where we highlight some of the exciting things going on here. We hope you enjoyed this tour as much as we did. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow or like us on Facebook. We'll see you back in the studio next week for more of LA this week.
If you or your family has recently suffered a loss of income, you may now qualify for the Department of Water and Power's Residential Low Income Discount Program. The LA DWP offers customers within qualifying income levels a subsidy on the cost of electric and water services for their primary residents. In addition, income-qualified senior citizens and disabled customers may be eligible for a discounted lifeline rate. Customers on life support equipment and those who meet the physician's certified requirements may also apply for a discounted rate. To find out if you qualify for any of these discounts and to receive a low-income discount application, please visit our website at www.ladwp.com.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since nineteen-eighty-six. You're watching LA City View, Channel Thirty-Five. Our city, our channel. Our city, our channel.
Good morning, good morning. Today is Friday, June 22nd. I want to welcome all of you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. If I could get everyone to be quiet, please. The Los Angeles City Council. Mr. If I could get a little quiet, so I can start this meeting. The council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. All of our meetings are open to the public, even our committee hearings. So, public, you're welcome to come and speak your mind and just watch your government and work, at work. So, we're going to begin today. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you call the roll?
Eler Cambuscaeno-Cortez, Englander-Garcetti, Weezer, Corret, LeBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zion, Wesson, ten members present.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Buscaino moves. Corret, seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves. Labange, seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, if you'd like to run through the agenda?
Fine, if we could go through the first section. And let me just say this, I know we haven't gotten to item 16 yet, but I'd like to hold that for now. Mr. Clerk, before I forget, if we could hold?
Very good, sir.
Item 16, we're trying to work out some issues where it relates to that.
We will hold 16 on the desk. Mr. President, furthermore, there have been requests to continue items 2, 6, and 28. Again, items 2, 6, and 28 to July 24. Furthermore, there's a request to continue items 9 and 10. Again, 9 and 10 to June 27.
Okay, for the public, let's go through that one more time. And maybe you could say what those items are referred to. Item 2, starting with item 2?
Item 2 and 6. Items 2 and 6 have to do with medical marijuana. Furthermore, item 28, which is in the special meeting, also has to do with medical marijuana. Technically, we can't continue that until we get into the special meeting. Nonetheless, there's been a request to continue that number as well. So, those three items are in regards to medical marijuana. Furthermore, items 9 and 10. Item 9 is consideration of a resolution relative to the city's position on administrative action, which would fully implement and enforce the Clean Air Act. And item 10 is consideration of resolution relative to the city's position on legislative and administrative action, which would stop the proposed expansion onto federal public lands of the Coal Hollow Strip Mine in Alton, Utah.
Okay. Members, specials on items, on the remaining items in section 1 through 6?
Mr. President, would you like to continue those previous items without objections?
Yes, without objection.
Very good.
Mr. Corret?
I'd like to call special number 4 for Mr. Weezer. And I also wanted to ask that, before we...
Let's hold item, what was that, item 4 for Mr. Weezer? And then I'll talk to you about those other items. Okay, on the remaining items, let's open the roll.
We're good, sir.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. President, that brings us to items 7 through 15. They're items for which public hearings have been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection. Specials, members? Specials, 7 through 15? Cards?
Mr. President, we have cards on items 7, 8, and 11. 7, 8, and, excuse, yeah, 7, 8, and 11, sir.
Okay, on the remaining items, let's prepare the vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 16 from the continuation agenda. You had previously asked to call item 16, to hold it on the desk, rather.
And we are holding it on the desk, so let's move.
Mr. President, it's a bit too early. Our special meeting is agendized for 10:15, so perhaps you'd like to go to presentations at this time.
Wait, Mr. Labange?
Yeah, number 14, special River Supply Conduit Project, very important. Thank you so much. Not special, you know, fourth with.
Okay, yeah, okay, fourth with.
Fourth with.
Fourth with.
I just tried to get to 10:15. I was adding words.
Okay, then, I don't think we can waste three minutes, so I think we're going to begin the presentation. Oh, wait, no, we've got Mr. Corret.
I can try to waste three minutes.
Where the floor is yours. It's Friday.
Mr. President, I just would like to ask that item 16 be continued to June 26.
Without objection. Members, any more announcements? Then we'll go to presentations. Ms. Perry, do you have a presentation? Are you ready? Okay, well, then I'll let you start it off.
You got the certificates? Great, okay. I'd like to invite Steve Gibson from the Figaro Corridor, BID, the Fashion District, BID, Kent Smith, Lynn Myers, and Randall, Tampa, and from the Downtown Center, BID, Carol Schatz, South Park, BID, Daryl Landis, the Downtown Industrial, BID, and the Arts District, BID, Larry Rousch, and from Little Tokyo, Joanne Kumamoto. And anybody else?
How about your story?
Yeah, sure, everybody, everybody.
Ken Nacano from ours, our director of ops.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. Today, it's my pleasure to welcome representatives from the Figaro Corridor Fashion District, the Downtown Center, Downtown Center, Downtown Industrial Arts District, South Park, Little Tokyo, Business Improvement District, and who did I miss? Historic Downtown, BID. These bids were first conceived...
Central City East?
Central City East here?
Yes.
Larry, are you here? Hey, Larry. Okay, Downtown Industrial. These bids were first conceived of and by our business communities who came together to provide services, activities, and programs that go beyond what the city can provide. Through their work, they have brought the city innumerable benefits around the clock, like security patrols, to create safer atmospheres to all parts of our city, in particular in downtown. The Downtown Center, BID's Purple Patrol are one of the most noticeable examples of the kinds of security the BIDs provide. The BIDs play a crucial role in preventing illegal dumping, graffiti removal, sidewalk cleaning, and pursuing other economic development activities that have made the community much more inviting for businesses to stay here in Los Angeles. Streetscape improvements include signage and medallions that create an atmosphere of immersion within the communities. These supplemental services, especially during hard, difficult times, have been a crucial component in the redevelopment of downtown Los Angeles, and I wanted to take this opportunity to personally thank each one of them for their role in keeping our streets safe, clean, and inviting for residents, workers, property owners, and businesses alike. Thanks very much to all of you for the work that you do in improving downtown Los Angeles to the benefit of the entire city of Los Angeles. I'd like for you to give them a hand.
That's the least you could do. Give them a, give them a rousing round of applause for all of the hard work that they do. Thank you, Ms.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, now, I, I'm going to move forward for a couple of presentations myself. Mr. Ray, in fact, without that, before we do that, it's beyond 10:15, Mr. Clerk, so let's... Okay, so then we'll go straight to presentation. All right, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Perry. Now we have our Council President, Councilmember Herb Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Today, I find myself with several presentations, so I want to start it out with one of my favorite ones, something that means a lot to me personally. Today is Pet Adoption Friday, okay? I have before me today, to my left, a two-and-a-half-year-old terrier mix named Milo, who was rescued from the Hanson Dam area. He was brought in by a Good Samaritan. He had a lot of cuts and bruises, and we believe he might have been attacked by coyotes. But he escaped, he survived, and now he's looking for a home. Here at the city of Los Angeles, Milo, look at the camera. See, there, you look at that face. Here in the city of Los Angeles, we have a 100% adoption rate where it relates to our dogs. Please, I'm not asking you to just bring home a pet for your child or yourself, I'm asking you to save a life. So, for the people that are here in the council chambers today, Milo is available, and he's available today? I mean, you can take him home as we speak. The majority of our dogs are adopted by people that are visiting us in the council chambers or watching us on television.
Councilmember Wesson, if I may, can we have the volume and the conversations down? It's hard to hear the Council President, very important message he's giving us. Can we please pay the courtesy and bring down the conversations?
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. So, anyway, you adopt one of these dogs, you're saving his life. If you call 888-452-7381 and find out that Milo has already been adopted, don't despair. We have several shelters within the city of Los Angeles and hundreds of dogs and cats and rabbits and birds that are looking for a home. So, please, help us. Look, you're looking for unconditional love? It's to my, it's to my left here with, with old Milo. So, if anybody wants him, let us know. We're going to keep Milo in the back for a half hour or so, where individuals will have an opportunity to come and to pet him and to fall in love with him. So, let's keep our 100% adoption rate alive and elect Milo, again, a mixed terrier, I mean, adopt Milo, a mixed terrier. Milo, do you want to be elected or do you want to be adopted? I think he wants to be adopted, and then maybe he'll run for the 10th district, which is the one I represent. But anyway, let's find a home for Milo. Thank you very much, Mr. President and members. Mr. Englander?
And, and he's still ruling from the podium. I love that. Thank you for calling on me. When I, when I learned that the President of the United States made a pledge and promised to his kids that when he got to the White House, he was going to get them a dog, I felt that I had to do the same. And so, when I was elected, we already had two dogs, and I, and I got another one. And unfortunately, now, our city caps us out at three legally, but I have my three, and, and I love my dogs. I understand that our newest member, Joe Buscaino, only has one dog. And he's, he's only had that dog, he's had it for two years, which means he didn't get the dog when he got elected. And he too has children and a wife at home, and this is an adorable dog that I think, I think now that his, his, his wife is going to be watching this, he cannot come home empty-handed. Do you all agree? And so, so I would, I would offer up Joe to bring this puppy home. Either that, or we also have Mayor Pro Tem of Calabasas, Fred Gaines, is here today in the audience, and he was, he too was recently elected, although I think, I think this dog is so cute, we want this one to stay in the city of L.A. I'm sorry, Fred. We want Joe to have him, but we could, we could see the fight. Anyway, thank you, Mr. President, for continuing to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to put Milo in the back, and it's my understanding that we have a special visitor. In fact, I'm going to be introducing a mayor from the great country of Korea, but I find myself at this point deferring to the great mayor of the city of Los Angeles, who is standing right behind me. Mr. President, I would like to afford Mayor Antonio Villarosa the microphone. Ladies and gentlemen, the mayor of the greatest city on the planet, Mayor Antonio Villarosa.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor, and welcome to the chambers.
As always, I just want to thank the Council President and the council for giving me this honor. You know, I, as you know, have taken over and partnered with about, let's see, 22 schools, 17,000 kids. We took on the toughest schools in L.A., and we're turning them around, and one of them is Jordan High School. And I, I was, I was at Jordan a couple of weeks ago and found out that these young men behind me are, for the second consecutive year, city champions in volleyball from Watts. I mean, you know, so I invited them to come and meet me. What I meant was, let's call the council member, and let's work together to come to the chamber. My staff got confused, they just came to my office, and I wanted to bring them here because, folks, we should be proud of these young men behind us, who really exemplify that champion spirit, both academically. And I talked to the seniors, every one of the seniors here are going to college. Every one of the seniors here are going to college. And so, I just wanted to bring them up. I don't want to take a lot of time, but I couldn't be prouder of them, and I, I know that you're proud of them, and I hope Mr. Councilmember Buscaino could say a few words as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and these are fine student athletes who we appreciate and we support. And absolutely, Mr. Mayor, these are students from Watts, California. There's a lot of great things happening in Watts, isn't that right? It's amazing that...
We like to say Watts is worth it.
Watts is worth it, absolutely, Mr. Mayor. And for me, it's kind of, again, it breaks my heart that, you know, Channel 7, Channel 2, and all these news outlets don't cover the positive things that are going on in Watts, and these fine student athletes and these champions. But just note that in my office, we're going to do everything in our power to share the good news and share your successes, students. We are proud of you, we love you, and we wish you nothing but the best. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, with that, I would like to see if we could get a good council member and these great young men here and... Get closer, get closer, everybody.
Group hug, group hug.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you so much, Mr. President, Mr. Pro Tem, thank you so much for allowing me to come by and interrupt your very important proceedings.
You're always welcome to the chamber, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Labange?
Dogs!
Very good. He knows every mascot for every... He knows every mascot for every high school in LA, I love it.
And let's have a hand for the great Rough Rider from Roosevelt, Mayor Antonio Villarreal.
Thank you very much.
Let's go through here.
Great job, Mr. Mayor. And we'll return the microphone back to our Council President, Herb Wesson.
Mr. President, if I may, in regards to item number 13, item 13 on today's agenda, there was a technical correction. The contract number was mistakenly listed. The correct contract number for item 13 should be C120057. Again, that's item 13.
And that's for the record? Thank you very much. Councilman Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Like I said, today I found myself with several presentations. This next one is a bittersweet moment for me. I'd like to ask the Masters family to please come forward. Pastor Masters. There ought to be a song, rap music about that, a positive one, pastor. You know, probably one of the most difficult things to do is to succeed or follow someone who was legendary, because the expectations placed on you are so high. But to follow a person who was iconic takes courage. The young man behind me decided to come here in 2001 to pastor the great Holman Methodist Church. Their pastor was James Lawson, civil rights leader, walked with Dr. King, had conversations with him, an iconic figure. No one knew how he was going to do. Well, I'm here to let you know that he pastored there for over 11 years, that he took that thriving church and made it even better. And now we're here to say, see you later, because he and his wife, also a doctor, also a pastor, are going to go back, return to their home state of Texas, to pastor a church who needs the type of pastor that can come in and make changes. And that's what this man is. He has been a dear friend of mine. I can't think of one thing that I have requested of him that he hasn't done for me. And I have done my very best to work for him and the members of his church. I will miss him, but I pledge to continue to work with the new pastor and to the individuals that go to Holman Methodist Church. On a personal note, in a few days will mark the one-year anniversary of my mother's death. And my mother attended a very, very small church in Inglewood, and my staff suggested to me that her church was just too small, that there would be a huge crowd to come and celebrate her life. So I asked Dr. Masters if we could use Holman Methodist in the district I represent, a church that my mother was very familiar with, and he said yes. Not only did he say yes, but his deacons were there, the women from the church were there to help with the repast he provided, whatever I needed at no cost. At no cost. I can say that now, since he's leaving. I wouldn't say he did it before I knew he was leaving, because I might get a bill from some of the other members of the church. But he's a good man, a good friend. He and his wife are phenomenal parents. Two children are already, have already graduated from school, another one en route to graduation. This is LA's loss, Dallas's gain. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to present to you Dr. Masters, formerly of Holman Methodist Church. And it's my understanding, your last sermon will be this Sunday, 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM, 11:00. I'll be there at 8:00. All right, ladies and gentlemen, please give him a round of applause.
Well, thank you, Councilman Wesson, and to all of you who have embraced us with your love and your support through the 11 years that we have been in this city, we want to say thank you. We have been honored to serve Holman United Methodist Church, and we've been honored to serve this city, and particularly in the West Adams District. So our prayers continue for you and with you as we move on to our next mission station, and hope that your prayers will be with us. We have been graced with a tour this morning of the Tom Bradley Tower, and have been impressed with that great vision of the, of the city that's there. And so we want to just thank you and pray that, that all will go well with the city of Los Angeles. And so my wife, Diana, and I want to extend our heartfelt thanks to Councilman Wesson for all of his support to, to our church at Holman, which is in his district, throughout the years, and pray that God will continue to pour his blessings out on this city. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you.
I now want to present to you a resolution from the city of Los Angeles, Pastor and Dr. Masters. You get in the middle.
Her in the middle?
Definitely her.
Wanted to join in the Council President's comments to our pastor who's leaving. And I was reminded, as Mr. Wesson was stating those words, of how difficult it is to follow in those big footsteps and to assume a role of a great leader, that Mr. Garcetti was reminding me of who the previous Council President was as well, so I wanted to share that. But actually, when I heard that you were moving to Texas, I thought, you know, the city of LA needs to be more business-friendly. Apparently, we need to be more pastor-friendly as well. We've lost businesses to Texas, and now you and your family. I wish you good luck and Godspeed, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to remind you also that one of your honored heroes is, Mayor Tom Bradley is a native of Calver, Texas, which is just a few miles down the road from Dallas, and so we are honored by that also.
Thank you, Pastor Masters. Give him one more round of applause. And Pastor, if you could follow Albert. Mr. President, my last one. I'm honored to present to you a colleague, a colleague from the great country of Korea, a colleague who is the mayor of Kwanju, a city with almost 1.5 million population. Mr. Mayor, get close, get close, Mr. Mayor, I don't bite. At least not this early in the morning. It's the sixth-largest city in Korea. Their main industry is auto manufacturing and information technology. They have over 593 schools, including nine universities and 38 graduate schools. At the 2002 World Cup, the Kwanju World Cup Stadium hosted the World Cup, where they saw South Korea advance to the semifinals for the first time in history by defeating We have a very close relationship with our Korean community, a very close relationship with the residents of Koreatown that reside in Los Angeles. So I feel honored, and it's a pleasure to present to you, from the great city of Kwanju, Mayor Kang. Mayor Kang, give him a round of applause.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Honorable President of Los Angeles City Council, Herb Wesson Jr., and distinguished council members and ladies and gentlemen. I am Kangun Te, Mayor of Metropolitan Kwanju City, the Republic of Korea. It is my great honor to have a chance to greet the council members of Los Angeles, the beautiful city called City of Angels, or gateway to the Pacific. Los Angeles is the city that has the largest Korean-American population in the United States, and also has a long and close relationship with Korea. People of Kwanju City also have a great affection for Los Angeles. To briefly introduce Kwanju Metropolitan City. First, Kwanju City of Democracy, Human Rights, and Peace. During the turbulent era in Korea, Kwanju leader split over the times and struggled through the hardship. In the 19th century, when the corrupt monarchy ruled Korea, Kwanju was the place where anti-government peasant movement first started. During the Japanese rule, student independence movement took place. Later, at the dawn of modern democracy in the 1970s, 1960s, democratic revolution also took place in the city of Kwanju. And 30 years ago, the May 18 Democratic uprising held in Kwanju in 1980 is a landmark of Korean democratization movement, and its documentary heritage is listed on the UNESCO Memory of the World Register last year as an icon of democracy. We founded the Kwanju International Human Rights Forum last year, and will continue to develop the guidelines in city of human rights to be adopted by UN Human Rights Council. Actually, the day before yesterday, Kwanju City and Nassau County of New York had a great meaningfully ceremony at the Eisenhower Park of Nassau County in New York. This building monument ceremony to commemorate the comfort women who were forcibly taken to the battlefield during World War II. As Mayor of Human Rights City Kwanju, I was deeply moved and touched by the ceremony. I appreciate United States Government and Nassau County for their permission to establish a monument to comfort women. I don't want to just blame Japan, but I think Japan has to uncover the truth about the comfort women issue and compare it and present how to compensate and cure them immediately. I would like to express my respect to you and the leaders of your countries for your contribution to enhance the value of democracy and human rights. I hope there will be your interest about comfort women of World War II. Second, Kwanju is a high-tech industrial city. Due to Kwanju has lead the democratization, the city fell behind in industrialization. In recent year, however, this has begun to change, such as the saying in the Bible, many who are rest will be passed. Kwanju is one of the fastest-growing cities in high-tech industries in Korea. The Korean government create special research and development zone in Kwanju, and designated the International Science Business Belt in Kwanju, where basic science are developed. Also, just Kwanju Institution of Science and Technology, one of the world top 10 university regarding research, is located in Kwanju. Photonics industries such as LED, optic communication, optic precision, and solar energy is raised up in Kwanju. About 400 related companies make over $2,600 million US dollars in sales per year. Two days ago, we signed a supply contract with Mountain Burner to provide LED, including street lights and interior lights with brand name "Made in Kwanju," MID, as much as $110 And global leading companies like Samsung Electronics and Gia Motors are located in Kwanju. Recently, Kwanju has focused on the development of electric vehicle technology. Kwanju is enabled to produce them with a more reasonable price and better quality. We are currently expanding into larger foreign markets. Third, Kwanju's city arts and culture in Korea. From all the times, Kwanju has produced great numbers of artists, especially in dance, song, and passion. We are behind the growing international popularity of K-pop. In addition, movie production is growing as a leading industry with combustion technology of changing 2D into 3D and developing cultural content industry in Kwanju. Kwanju is a city of Biennale, as Kwanju Design Biennale and Kwanju Biennale are held every second year alternately. I founded Kwanju Biennale when I was Mayor of Kwanju from 994 to 995. Lately, Kwanju is rising up as a leading internationally in the environment policy. Kwanju held the Urban Environment Accord in October last year, and 100 important cities and representatives from UNEP, UN Habitat, and other environment organizations met and shared the ideas for the future. Cities have responsibilities and obligations to solve environmental issues as much as central governments. Following this summit, Kwanju decided to accept the CDM, Green Development Mechanism, to reduce the CO2 emissions of the whole city as a unit. Four days ago, I joined the Leo Plus 20 Summit in Brazil and emphasized the necessity of urban CDM. Now, UNEP, the World Bank, and Kwanju City is going to develop detailed plans by 2013, and if it is listed by the UN IPCC, it would open up a new chapter in global environment. Respectably present and distinguished members of City Council, even if... Even if your city is located on opposite side of Korea, we always think of you as a partner who can discuss common issues such as economy, culture, and human rights. With signing an MO between our two cities this afternoon, I hope it will be a good chance to improve mutual understanding and development. Once again, I deeply appreciate taking your time out of your busy schedule and your warm welcome. Also, I look forward to having opportunity to welcome you in our city, Gwangju. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Kang.
Oh, just a moment. In addition, I should I bring my gift, small gift to you. Maybe every council member's on your desk, small gift is one of brush. And now I want to give to president my present.
I'll show you mine if you show me yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Kang. It's great to have you in the city of Los Angeles, Mayor Kang. Councilmember Bustaino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too want to stand with Mr. Weston and welcome Mayor Kang to the great city of Los Angeles. And San Pedro, as many of you know, is home to the Korean Friendship Bell. And the bell was given as a gift to the Republic of Korea to celebrate the bicentennial, the United States bicentennial. And as a kid growing up in San Pedro, often my parents brought me to the Korean Friendship Bell and we shared the history behind the bell. And I too today bring my kids to the bell. And I've always told myself, one day I'm going to ring that bell. And on Independence Day, July 4th, I'll ring it for the first time as a city council member along with the Korean people across the city. And as we, if you know, if you don't know, the Korean bell is rung five times. That's the Independence Day. In addition, it's rung the Korean American Day on January 13th, and the Korean Liberation Day on the 15th, and every September in celebration of the Constitution Week. So Mayor Kang, again, welcome. Thank you for, I thank your people and your country for the great gift that you've given to the great city of Los Angeles and San Pedro as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bustaino. If I may, just want to say thank you, Mayor Kang. For a while, we did have the honor to represent a portion of Koreatown. It is an amazing community. The relationship with Asian Pacific Island and Los Angeles continues to grow. And thank you for your great speech. Thank you so much, Mayor Kang. Okay, as Mayor Kang leaves the chamber, Councilman Carruthers, are you ready with your presentation?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Los Angeles may be the most diverse city in the world, and I'm proud to say that and to have been born and raised here. One great contributor to our diversity is the Ethiopian community. As many of you know, Los Angeles has the largest Ethiopian community in the United States. And Ethiopia and the United States have had a long and strong relationship, reflected among other things by John F. Kennedy's visit to Ethiopia as one of the few countries that he was able to visit during his presidency. Council President Herb Weston and I are blessed to share the Little Ethiopia neighborhood. I've had nothing but warm welcomes from everyone we work with in the Ethiopian community and admiration for what they've been able to accomplish. Every year, Little Ethiopia holds a cultural street festival to celebrate the New Year, and it attracts thousands of people from all over Los Angeles. Last year, Little Ethiopia celebrated its 10th anniversary of this festival, and I was honored to speak at that event. And it's an extraordinary and vibrant community with a remarkable heritage. And I thank not just those people who are so splendid in what they do, but the esteemed gentleman here and the nation and tradition he represents. I take great pride and joy in serving the Ethiopian community as one of its council members. And I'm delighted to welcome Ambassador Abdulaziz Ahmed Adem to Los Angeles, where members of his family live and go to school. Ambassador Adem has been, has served his country as ambassador to Somalia and numerous other countries as a special envoy of the Ethiopian Prime Minister to the Intergovernmental Agency for Development and the Horn of Africa, as member of the Ethiopian Parliament, as Deputy Secretary of the Constitution Drafting Commission of Ethiopia, and as Chief Executive Officer of the National Election Commission of Ethiopia. The ambassador is joined by a number of other Ethiopian friends of Los Angeles. Let's give a warm Angelino welcome to the ambassador.
Welcome, Ambassador. Councilman Rosendahl.
Yes, I'd like to say a few words. In 1975, I went from Khartoum across the Nivian Desert and entered Ethiopia. I was there for the Coptic Christian Celebration. Got into a small community. Actually, at that point, I was in the back of a cotton truck because there was some issues going on and it was a safety reality. When I got there, the Ethiopians were amazing. And I had watajura and I sat around and hung there. Very regal-looking people. And for me, it was an honor and a privilege. I was by myself with a backpack, wandering around the world. And ever since that moment, I have been a close, personal friend of Ethiopia and its people. So it's a pleasure to be here with you today. Thank you.
Councilman Garcetti.
Thank you. I just wanted also say thank you to Councilmember Carruthers and welcome our ambassador and thank him for his great service. I too first went from Los Angeles to Ethiopia when I was 16 years old and spent time in Gondar and in the north. And then I lived in 1995 and 1997 in Ethiopia and Eritrea and spent a lot of time in Addis Ababa and all around the country. And it has been a very important part of my life and a very defining moment in my desire to make sure that we have a great friendship between our nations. And Ethiopian community here is really, truly an amazing asset. Those who have come here from Ethiopia and those who have returned as well. My dear friend Bogale Tgevre, who is working on women's health issues, is a dear friend. I serve on her Board of Parents International Ethiopia today, raising funds here to send to Ethiopia in the Kambata area to be able to combat health issues and development issues as well. So thank you and it's great to have you here. Congratulations and eleuch.
Councilman Alender. No, okay. Mr. Carruthers. Councilman Parks.
I want to welcome the ambassador in behalf of my daughter-in-law, who's Ethiopian, and my two grandchildren. They wanted to also welcome you here today. And certainly, they are long-term people that go to Little Ethiopia and certainly glad to see your presence in council.
I would like to thank the council and residents of Los Angeles City. My country has a long relationship with the United States people and with the city of Los Angeles. For example, the nation's legendary library at Awa University was built with the help of John F. Kennedy, and it is named after him. Los Angeles also has, as you have mentioned, the second-largest Ethiopian population in USA. Our country is diverse, just like you, like yours. Even when I saw your flag, it's green, yellow, and red in a different format. Even though I do have our own theory why it became green, yellow, red, I don't want to go into it. We have also become, for the last 21st years, federal democratic republic, just like you. So I can't mention, or I can't say enough, the relationship between USA and Ethiopia. It's a pleasure to be here and honored by you. Thank you very much. Amos Agnalo.
Thank you, Ambassador.
And I'd like, on behalf of all the council members in the city of Los Angeles and other elected officials, the mayor, city controller, and city attorney to present you with this cotton basin. And we look forward to a continuing exceptional relationship with the Ethiopian community here in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Councilman Carruthers. Thank you, Ambassador, so much. Welcome to Los Angeles. Now, Councilman Englander.
Yeah, right next to you. I'm going to have you guys close the box.
Councilman Englander.
Thank you. We can ask for a little more quietness in the room.
Please have the chamber quiet down, please, as bringing down the volume of the conversations.
Councilmembers, this is one of the most difficult things we ever have to do. Two weeks ago today, on Friday, June 8th, 2012, at approximately 2:00 a.m., LAPD Valley Traffic Officers responded to investigate a traffic collision involving a bicyclist near Nordoff Street and Gaviota and North Hills. Mr. Helfen had been riding his bicycle eastbound on the south side of Nordoff Street when he was struck from behind by a vehicle. He was thrown into the bushes by the roadside and died at the scene from massive injuries. As the Public Safety Chair, I'm here with Captain Menzel, commanding officer of LAPD Valley Traffic, Detective Bustos, officer in charge of LAPD Valley Traffic, and the family members of the victim from this tragic traffic accident. Chris Maloney, the nephew, Kathy Maloney, his niece, Yvonne, his sister, Mark Gonzalez, his son-in-law, and Kim, his daughter, and Nidia Jackson, his girlfriend. We are calling on the public to help. We are introducing a motion today to offer a $50,000 reward to help the LAPD, the Valley Traffic Detective, catch this driver. The driver is believed to be in a 2007 to 2012 Nissan Sentra. He fled from the scene without stopping or helping to render aid. When a driver flees from a collision without rendering aid to an injured person, it is no longer considered an accident. It is a crime. It's horrific crime. Stopping to render aid and call 911 to get an ambulance could have saved this victim's life. I urge anyone with information about the accident or the whereabouts of the driver or the hit-and-run vehicle to contact LAPD Valley Traffic immediately at 818-644-8000. That's 818-644-8000. Or toll-free 877-LAPD247. Your tip, your anonymous tip, can help and solve this crime and bring justice to this family. And now I'd like to turn it over to Chris Maloney, the nephew, if I could.
Thank you all. I just wanted to let you know a little bit about my uncle. It's, you know, we see the news stories and sometimes it can be so impersonal. And to realize that one individual could have so much of an impact on so many lives. We've had family in over the last few weeks from the East Coast and from the Pacific Northwest, relatives coming from Washington and all over the country. And I just think it should be understood that he was the type of person, that it wasn't a superficial relationship, and he was a foundation to the entire extended family. He was our go-to guy. And he was a lot of things to a lot of people. He was a realtor and has numerous contacts through that, a day trader, an avid cyclist, a marathon runner, partaking in the city's marathons, and flying for the Australian Marathon in Hawaii. He was a dedicated athlete. I just want to say, it's so easy to minimize the impact of his death by saying, "He was 76 years old. He lived a good life." And that's not true. He lived a great life. He filled it with everyone around him. He lived it completely. And the truth is, we expected him to outlive all of us. He had no expiration date. He should have been here talking on our behalf, every one of us, because he was that solid and that forward-moving. I just think it's important that we all do whatever's possible to bring this person to justice. I may be a little bit utopian in my view that we're a community and we're one heck of a large community, but we're still that. We have a responsibility to each other individually. He may be one small cog in this community, but he's extremely important. And we should all want to do whatever possible to bring this person to justice. It's extremely important. They've killed a little piece of every person in our family. I know my kids wanted to be here, my grandkids wanted to be here because everyone would want to speak out on his behalf. Unfortunately, it's a little difficult. Like I said, even at 76, we expected him to be here for the majority of our lives. So it can't be, it can't be excused. Thank you.
Ask the officers in charge of the investigation to say a few words as well.
Mr. President, fellow council members, thank you for supporting Councilman Englander's motion. We believe this reward will generate public interest in bringing forward that witness or maybe even that passenger in that car on that horrible night when Mr. Heflin was killed. It is important that all Angelinos know that traffic is a major component of our city and that moving throughout it requires all our participation and all of our cooperation. So if you're the driver out there, do the right thing and tune yourself in and bring closure to the closure to this family. On behalf of the Valley Traffic Detectives, who are investigating this case, and all the Valley Traffic Officers, I thank this board for their support in this motion.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Engler, we do have, okay, remove this name. Well, I just want to say to you, our deepest sympathies, our condolences to the whole family, on behalf of the council. I'm hoping that those who are listening to this presentation will come forward with information that can help us track down those perpetrators who created such a heinous crime. So thank you very much for your time, and thank you, Councilor Engler. My prayers are with the family as well. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna take you guys over this way.
Yes, Councilor Buscaino, an introduction?
Closer to me, guys. Okay, closer. Whoa. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Members, it gives me a great, a great opportunity for me to introduce, in the John Ferraris Council Chambers, members of the Wilmington Boys and Girls Club Keystone Leadership Group. Let's give them a round of applause. They, this is just a fraction of the entire group. All of them are going to college. We are so proud of their efforts and giving back to the community. And here before me, behind me, are our future elected officials. And these are, I don't want to say future leaders, these are leaders of today, and we want to recognize them, acknowledge them, and we are so proud of you all, and we love you, and we wish you nothing but the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Okay, Mr. Clerk, how many items are in the special meeting?
Mr. President, we have 12 items on the special agenda.
Do we have cards on those items?
There are two items that presently have cards, sir.
And what items are those?
Well, might I clarify, there are three items. We have items 24, 26, and 28, which is scheduled for closed session. Those are the three items that have cards.
Okay, well, let's move to the special agenda. If you could call the first order of business, the special meeting. So are we recessing, going to special meeting?
Yes, sir, we'd recess.
And we just have to complete these items? Okay.
Very good, sir. Alarcon Buscaino, Cardenas Engler Garcia, Cucurella, Carrasco, Corian LaBanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Wesson, 13 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Specials members?
Mr. President, prior to beginning, there has been a request to continue item 28 to July 24. Again, item 28 to July 24. That was the companion item, as previously announced, with items 2 and 6 on the regular agenda.
Okay, without objection. Specials members. Okay, they had no special. Mr. Kucurell, you're fine with the continuance? Okay. On that, Mr. Garcetti?
Amendment on item 24, if I'm not mistaken, the clerk was gonna make.
Okay, 24's been held by cards.
Okay.
So when we get to it.
Okay, great.
Okay, so let's prepare, Mr. Clerk, to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll.
Mr. President, first, we're now voting on items 18 through 23.
Okay.
Those are the items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now let's...
Yes, sir.
We held items 24 and 25, so now we're voting on 26 and 27?
We held items 24 and 26 for cards, sir.
26?
So we'll vote on 25 and 27.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. President, we do have item 17. That was an item noticed for a public hearing, and we do have a card on that matter, I believe.
Okay, on item 17?
Correct, sir.
All right, so let's deal with the three items that have been called special by cards. So on item 17, if I could have Mr. John Walsh and Michael Carion come forward. Mr. Walsh and Michael Carion. Michael, you're closer, so go on. 70, yes, Mr. Kucurell?
Number 22, forthwith, please.
Okay, 22, forthwith. Okay, Mr. Walsh.
Let the record show, I ran here, so not to waste time, like a certain mayor did with his 15-minute speech. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, come to our website. And incidentally, I'm not gonna light this joint, but I've never smoked one in my life, because, except once, I didn't like it. That's why I don't have any children. I tried it once, I didn't like it. I'd like to say on this issue, number 17, that you should, in fact, this is tax equity, it's very important, vote for it. I'm very upset that you had a false alarm, and everyone showed up to support the marijuana clinics, and as a result, we're sitting here with nothing to do. And I'd like to finish by saying, Herb Wesson, you killed at the Staples Center Arena as the emcee. The blogosphere said you stole the show at the hockey celebration. And I'd like to finish by saying exactly how he opened his speech. He said, "Don't boo me, I'm not the mayor, I'm only the city council president." For more information, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Michael.
Do not close the clinics.
Michael.
I'd like to open up with asking for a little stability here in the city council. Apparently, we're all over the place, nobody knows where we're at and when we're there. We started a meeting late, we have these ceremonies every day, council members are late, never on time, unless it affects them, and now we have $25.6 million for another project downtown, yet we got a wall in Solstice that can't be fixed. I guess downtown is for certain people, so they can have whatever they want, and we'll fight for that, to give them whatever buildings they want, so we can give more liquor licenses out downtown. But we've been sitting on a wall falling down, the streets blocked off for eight years. The handicapped people can't pass. We put more new restrictions on them. There's a wall that's falling, there's a stairway that comes down, that's blight. And I've called Mr. Weezer's office on that, and they haven't done anything about it. Blight. For over a month, there's been a mattress there, right on the stairs, and nobody's done anything about it. It's pathetic. I've called your office for the past week, and they haven't returned my call. Paul, said he'd do this, he reached it, all this. That's five days, I have five messages, not one callback. He's in a meeting, he's in a meeting, he's in a meeting. I'm getting tired of it. We can go back to the old ways, or we can straighten this out. But I'm here to make sure that I won't vote for this. If it's anything that you're voting for, I won't vote for it. I will sit here, and I will make an issue out of everything that you have, when I get treated this way. I voted for you, and I expect you to speak to your employees, to hold up their end of the bargain. I haven't been here, I haven't been complaining, I've tried to work with your office, but I'm not gonna get shut out. I'm not gonna get treated like you guys treat the people in San Fernando. You're closing their communications and everything, I won't be there, I will come here.
Thank you. Okay, so on this item, Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now we are on item 24, held special by cards. Item 24 is Mr. Walsh. Please come forward, and take your time, Mr. Walsh. Take your time.
Not bad, we're 69 years old, huh? This is very, very important. Come to our website. One million hits a year. This concerns block grants. That's federal money that comes to LA, that then the city council has discretion on how to spend it. They don't have to spend it on anything, except what the city council wants to spend it on. And they did a great job here, because they want to spend it on street lighting. This is very important, so there's a lot of street lighting around all the 100 medical marijuana clinics. And that the street lighting continue for the next 20, 30, or 40 years. And if you don't like what the city is doing...
Mr. President, he doesn't appear to be on topic.
Stay on topic, John.
HollywoodHighlands.org, keep the clinics open.
Thank you. On this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that now brings us to item 26, called special by Mr. Arnold Sachs. And before Mr. Sachs gets here, let me say to those of you that are in attendance today that item 2 has been continued, along with item 6. So if you're here to speak on those items, you would not be allowed to, because we are not going to take that item up. Many of you have filled out general public comment cards, so you have to be very careful, because you're not supposed to speak to a specific item. So if you do, I will cut you off, and make sure that you move on. And when we get to general public comment, it will be one minute a person.
What?
Mr. Sachs, you wanna go home right now?
What?
No, Mr. Sachs, you're on item 26.
I'm here to speak, I'm allowed to speak?
On item 26.
I'm speaking on item 26.
On item 26, on item 26.
On item 26, just like the other speaker spoke on their item, I'm speaking on item 26.
You're not on topic.
I'm just asking for next word, sir.
Speak on item 26.
Item 26 refers to other block grant funds, like the other speaker just spoke about, okay? And the use of block grant funds by the city council. And the use of block grant funds by the city council pay for salaries, instead of programs. Has anybody in the audience ever gone to a meeting and listened to people request funding for community development block grant funds? These are for programs that help nonprofits operate, to get supplies, to offer housing, to offer services. The city uses their block grant funds to pay for salaries. Not for programs, but to pay for salaries. Now, they'll say, "Well, the salaries help run programs." But the city isn't in the business of running those programs. The city isn't in the business of oversight of nonprofits to run programs. And as far as what we can speak on on the agenda, well, 2 and 6 were already held in committee.
Okay, you're off subject.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, on this item, on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Forthwith, Mr. Clerk, I believe we have finished all of the items in the special meeting.
Mr. President, that's correct. Would you like to adjourn the special meeting at this time?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
If I could just remind the members, if there are any items on the special meeting agenda that they would request to be sent forthwith, this should be done now, before adjourning this meeting.
Okay, Mr. Garcetti, there was one item...
24 and 25, we can send forthwith, please.
Then let's adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting.
Very good, Mr. President. That takes council back to items called special or public comment, not on council's agenda.
Okay, so let's start off with Aura Vasquez, followed by Stuart Richland, followed by Go right ahead.
Good morning, city councils. My name is Aura Vázquez. I am here on behalf of the Beyond Coal Campaign and the Sierra Club. This morning, not only the Sierra Club and the Beyond Coal Campaign gather outside of this chamber, but also NRDC, Lanescope Agenda, the Interfaith Groups, the Center for Biological Diversity, to support our efforts to move a la beyond coal. We are excited that the majors' office has also signed the Mercury Rule, along with another 90 majors in the United States. The city of Los Angeles must move ahead to stop sending its dollars out of state, to pay for dirty coal power, and instead invest in clean energy that will benefit all Angelenos. So we really committed, and we urge you to support us on that. These years, all of us, customers of LEDWP, we sent $477 million to Utah and to Arizona to buy...
Thank you. Finish your sentence.
I urge you to support our campaign, and also all the efforts that we have encountered...
Thank you. Stuart, Stuart Richland, Richard Eastman, Lisa Sarkin. Mr. Richland?
No, I don't believe, I see Stuart Richland, I'm Richard Eastman.
Okay, then you go right ahead, sir.
Okay, citizens of Los Angeles, Richard Eastman, have lived here since 1976, and I used to be in the motion picture industry, and I helped save the Hollywood sign. And some of you remember me as one of the founders of medical marijuana, and 20 years living with HIV and AIDS. And about eight years ago, I ran for city council to make Hollywood a city. And today, I'm standing before you as a potential candidate for the 13th Council District. There are 12 people running, and if I place my name on the ballot in November, there'll be 13, or maybe 14, with Kevin DeLeón. And get the greed out of the weed, yes, medical marijuana has saved my life. And 17 years, fighting for it, I'm proud of it. And if I do run for city council when I place my name on the ballot, the people of Hollywood will have a choice, other than those other 12 candidates and Mr. Kevin DeLeón, because I've lived in Hollywood since 1976. I almost died from AIDS, fighting for AIDS, fighting for medical marijuana, fighting for rent control, fighting for the people of Los Angeles. My name is Richard Eastman. GreedOutOfWeed.org, our new organization, and keep the clinics open, because you have no right to ban them.
Thank you. Lisa Sarkin, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to keep it down, sergeants, sergeants, and visitors, you're going to have to keep it down. Lisa, I'm gonna get right with you. This, I know Mr. Rosenthal was gonna say this, but Bill, I'm going to say it. This item has been continued to July 24th, right, Mr. Weezer? That bodes well for you, because it means that conversations are occurring. I am asking you to please control yourselves today, because I don't think you'll be doing yourselves any favor. Let these discussions continue. Come back in full force on the 24th, where this item, I do not believe will be continued, and you will be afforded your opportunity to speak. Mr. Rosenthal, did you want to add to that?
I just wanted to add, Mr. President, many of you know my position on this. I'm totally against the ban bit. I'm for looking at the state legislation, that's gonna have the details of how to work it out, and I think we should wait, it's my personal opinion, until the state acts, which will help us in the process here. And I don't want the city to take action in banning anything at this point, and I'd like you all to come back strongly with that energy on the 24th. You don't need to do it now, there are many of us who totally agree with you, and I hope with the state, and I talked to Kamala Harris, the Attorney General, who said the details have to be worked out.
Just a reminder, Mr. Rosenthal, that item is stamped before us now.
You can't speak specifically to that item. Okay, Lisa Sarkin, William Robeson, Robeson, and Arnold Sachs, please come forward.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Engler.
Item 23, can I ask that forthwith, please?
Yeah, without objection, yes. Oh, no, we've already, Mitchell, we've already... Mitchell, we've already closed that meeting. We cannot go back to it. So we'll get it there. It won't be... We won't be able to do it forthwith. Yes, sorry for the delay.
Lisa Sarkin, Studio City Neighborhood Council, Chair of the Land Use Committee. I'm here speaking for myself. And I am upset that I had to come down here today for something that should have been taken care of years ago. All of you, you need to do something. We have... We've closed down two medical marijuana dispensaries in Studio City, but we still have 12. There's 18 in Sunland Tahanga. Nobody from Sunland Tahanga could be here today. I have complaints from every business that's attached or adjacent to all of these places. In Studio City, 90% of the medical marijuana district, I mean dispensaries, are next to homes, underneath homes. They all run along Ventura Boulevard. Studio City is very small. We need you to do something for us. In my backyard, I can smell marijuana from this one place that opened on December 31st that's on the hillside with 26 steps going up to it. How is that helping anybody that's sick? We need some rules. We need something. You need to stand up and do something instead of just taking time off of everybody's lives and postponing it.
Thank you. Okay, no, I'm gonna let all of you speak. Will not let anybody boo you. You will show the same respect to people who have an opinion that's different than yours. William, I thought I saw you. Please come forward. And Arnold Sacks.
I'm William Restbusen.
Oh, look, wait a minute.
I'm William Restbusen.
Wait, wait, hold, hold, William, wait for one second. No outbursts here, and you know that. You come here... No, you come here every day. You're disrupting the meeting. You don't speak from the seats. You speak from the mic. All right. Sorry, sir.
I'm William Restbusen, and I'm a garden variety patient who uses the dispensaries, particular dispensaries specifically. And a couple stories I have. I came here about three years ago, about the same time I went to a dispensary, this is the second part of my story, and I pleaded with you to give the dispensary that was helping me, that invited me to come here to talk, a break. And you didn't give them a break. It was nil, or minimal, the attention you gave them. And now, and then I went, I was sort of hit, somebody helped me by hand and took me to a dispensary that I'm with several of the caregivers today, and they told me, please come back, please come back. And I told them the same thing that I told you, that I'm an AIDS patient and I was broke and I'm poor, and they helped me, and they continue to help me today. And please, don't, don't make it harder on the patients that need the help, you know, because we're vulnerable.
Okay, now, I'm giving you... I want you guys, if you're gonna come up and do this, you have to be more vague. You cannot speak to the item until the 24th. You do yourself a disservice. Mr. Sacks?
Thank you. Good morning. First of all, the items that you're talking about, two and six, were also held in committee hearings. So just like yesterday with the redistricting, and I'm expecting Councilwoman Perry and Parks to get up and say, we asked for those hearings to be reopened. Somebody gonna reopen the hearings, or where's the rule boy, Councilman Englander, to discuss the rules of the council that said that the items already been in committee don't need to have public hearing held anymore? And by the way, you were right, Mr. President, there is no outburst, just a lot of passing of gas at the council chambers. But I'd like to point out to you that, you know, you had a special committee meeting back on, on March 16th regarding the redistricting. And remember, Mr. City Attorney, you made a special ruling that you can leave the special meeting and go back to the regular meeting. And where was Councilwoman Perry and Parks when they did that? When they made rules up? Where did you stand up and tell your constituents, that's wrong? You can't do that. You have to continue the special meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Kristen Finley, Alexa Cates, last name Foster, first name begins with an A, I think it's Ayana, Ayana, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Kristen Finley, and I've been before you guys over the past couple weeks. I've been opening up my heart to you about my medical condition here. I've said on numerous occasions that I need safe access to medical marijuana in order to eat. Without it, I can't digest anything. As I have courageously stood here and explained my medical condition, something that's very personal and emotional to me, some of you have politely and graciously listened, and I thank you for that. However, some of you, from outside appearance at least, seem to treat general comments as your own personal social hour. I understand if you work hard and you're tired, but we elected you to be our voice. We are the public. You're supposed to listen to our voices and be the voice for us, not the voice for yourself. So listen to my voice. I need safe access to medical marijuana in order to eat, in order to be a functioning and contributing member to society. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. You gotta quit the applause because it takes from your time. I mean, it really does, okay? It takes from your time. Basically, we could have 15 minutes of public hearing and that would meet the state requirement. We don't like to do that. We want to afford all of you the opportunity to speak. So work with me so that I can get all of these speakers up here. Mr...
Keats.
Is it Alexi?
Alexi.
Alexi, okay.
Most people call me Al. You can do the same.
And I will, Al. I've seen you about four times. I would recognize you on the street. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Well, good morning, council members. As you know, my name is Alexi Keats, and thank you, as always, for the chance to speak here today. Two muffins are sitting in the oven. One muffin looks over and says, hey, it's pretty hot in here. The other says, oh my God, a talking muffin! The first time I heard that joke, it was at the Improv Comedy Club. I had snuck in when I was years old, and Doug Benson was the one performing it. And throughout American history, stand-up comedy as an art form struggled to find a place in mainstream culture. And while the majority of the country stood against lascivious comedians speaking obscenities to drunks, it was cities like Los Angeles that became havens for those who sought entry into a burgeoning art form. History shows us that all the traits of a successful culture may have, it is the adaptable cultures that survive the test of time. The list goes on of city-states that grew with the promotion of cultural change and collapsed under the weight of cultural stagnation. Do not make the mistake of making the mistakes of the past. Look at the core of all the ordinances before you today and ever after, and ask yourself, how will this affect my culture?
Thank you, Al. Ayana Foster, Murtha... Murtha, if you're here, come help me out, because I'm gonna need help on that last name. Daniel Sosa, another familiar name, if you'd come and get behind Murtha. Ayana.
Good morning. My name is Ayana Foster, and I am here on behalf of my husband, Stephen Delaney. He is a medical marijuana user. He has bipolarism, and before he was introduced to medical marijuana, he was in and out of the hospital from 20 to 24. He suffered, they misdiagnosed him for depression, and because of that, they gave him Paxil, and he tried to commit suicide. They gave him the right, so-called right medication, which was Wellbutrom and lithium, which caused him to have seizures. He couldn't work. He had problems with the authorities and law. He was completely non-functioning. He has been a medical marijuana user for 10 years. We've been married for six. He can work, and now he is a citizen of society that can be committed to society because of medical marijuana. This is the United States. It's supposed to be for life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. We can't do this without medical marijuana, a lot of us. So I need you guys to understand, because of medical marijuana, I now have a husband. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, help me.
My name is Mitra Derrickshon. Mitra Derrickshon, yes. Thank you for letting me be here today. Good morning. I'm 23 years old. I'm a native to Los Angeles. I'm an environmental science student, and I'm a registered voter. I'm here today to give you guys some facts just about cannabis. It has been proven to be a non-lethal substance. Modern research suggests that cannabis is a valuable aid in the treatment of a wide range of clinical applications. These include pain relief, particularly neuropathic pain, which is pain from nerve damage, nausea, spasticity, glaucoma, and movement disorders. Cannabis is also a powerful appetite stimulant, especially for patients suffering from HIV or dementia. There is also emerging research that suggests that cannabis, cannabis's medicinal properties may protect the body against some types of tumors and are neuroprotective. Currently, more than 60 U.S. international health organizations support granting patients immediate legal access to medicinal cannabis under a physician's supervision. Why must we even have this debate? We should all, intelligent, reasonable adults, decide that cannabis is for the betterment of the public's safety and health. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Sosa, followed by John Walsh, followed by John Brown.
Greetings, council. My name is Daniel Sosa. First of all, I want to thank you guys for taking items two and six off the agenda today. And we will be back on the 24th, and we'll also be back every single meeting until then. So just... And I just want to ask, how many people in this room support medical marijuana collectives?
Yeah!
Not bad, all right. Just want to let you guys know. You know, cannabis is a non-lethal substance. Cannabis is the biggest cash crop in the United States. Cannabis is the biggest cash crop in California. There are 400,000 patients in the city of Los Angeles. The marijuana industry in California is a $14 billion industry. Why do you want to ban it? Thank you.
Thank you. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org, followed by John Brown, candidate for mayor, and Sidney Jercivic. Go on, Mr. Walsh.
Okay, he said be vague about... Okay, you know that green stuff that people smoke? You know those places somewhere where they get it, the sick people? Maybe if you have some kind of ordinance, maybe you should get rid of it. I think that was vague enough. Anyone but Garcetti for mayor. We had a rape, another rape, 1600 North Gower, yesterday, 2:40, 2:45 a.m., rip, rape, and run. And I'm telling you, nobody ever committed rape who was smoking marijuana. Because when you're smoking marijuana, you just sit down and trip. That's all you do. It's speed that causes people, and they don't give a damn about speed. They're the people who murder their children, speed freaks. And I just want you to say about density, the city's, the mayor said, or rather, the man who will never be mayor, Garcetti, said, if you don't like the density, get out of town. HollywoodHighland.org.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, followed by Sidney, and then Raul Barrios. I want to see the three people. Mr. John Brown, good to see you again.
Very good to see you. Hi, everybody. You know, I hope it never happens to you. You know, you have a car, you have a condo, you have a job, and you get sick. It's horrible. And what happens? You get so sick they have to give you pain pills, and they give you usually morphine or oxycontin or something like that. And you know, I ended up losing my car, losing my condo, my 401K went with the recession. Every penny in the bank had to be spent, and before you know it, I was pennies and down here by the mission, my friends. And I'll tell you, it's not fun. And it can happen to any of you. And when the doctor says, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, but the morphine and everything has given you an impaction and we're gonna have to dig you out, well, you just figure out what that means. And that's what happened. When you don't have medical marijuana...
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Sidney, Raul, Raul Barrios? Okay, hi.
Hi, good morning.
Somebody watch their phone. Hold her time. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to all of us today. I just want to continue the opposition on bans for collectives. I think there's a great need for safe access to marijuana. There's over 175,000 people with illnesses that are able to cure or relieve their symptoms while still leading a successful life with no negative physical side effects. I can't say the same thing about pharmaceutical drugs. The medicine that comes from pharmaceutical dispensaries can have very negative side effects, often worsening the problem or in fact adding another health issue to a patient's well-being, such as failure of liver or failure kidneys. At worst, their consumption becomes fatal. On the other hand, medical marijuana has zero deaths that are linked to medical marijuana. As you've heard statistics from many speakers before me, there is no increase in crimes around medical marijuana collectives. There is, however, more crime and disruption at drugstores that dispense pharmaceutical drugs. Why aren't we drafting bans?
Thank you. And she was here basically supporting these dispensaries, not speaking against those two items. Raul.
Good morning. This is my partner. We've been together... Tomorrow, we'll celebrate 22 years as a committed couple. And in 98, he was diagnosed with full-blown AIDS, 12 T cells and half a million virulose. And what can we do? How can we help him? The meds were killing him. He worked for the Harvard Division, done in San Pedro as an impound manager, working for the city, doing your guys' job. And the only thing that could help him was me violating my parole by picking up marijuana in the street illegally. I violated twice because of that, trying to help my husband out so he can survive. Now, 2012, he's doing great. He's wonderful. I thank God. I thank safe access. I'm not gonna mention anything, just safe access. If you guys would just continue the safe access, people like him can continue to survive. I mean, it's a story of love, it's a story of tragedy, but it's our story. And I just want you guys to hear it and know that without people like us, people like him who've worked for you guys and probably towed cars for you guys, help us. Just understand what safe access is and give it to us. Thank you.
Raul, thank you for that, and I like that safe access. Hopefully, other people will take note. I'm gonna go to the Valley. You are?
I'm from Washington, D.C. We're here, we wanted to, I know this time...
Did I call your name? I will get to it, sir. Because we've probably got about 80 people that would love for me to call their name right now. But we're gonna move to the Valley, to Donna Pierman and Marion Fogler, and then we will return to the city council meeting here. If we could go to the Valley, please? Ms. Pierman?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, that's good. Number one, you've had a violation because we never got any at the special agenda. Anyway, you're taking a... Well, it looks like we're only taking a small amount, 12 people. What you're doing is that every time, my opinion, there'll be 1,000 other people who feel the same way that I feel, that use me as a way to get their thousands of people to get the... I bring down the way they feel over the TV, so you're not just bringing down 20 people. What you're doing now is you're bringing down all those people with thousands of other people.
Look, they're only giving you one minute.
And there are only one minute. I'm not even talking about the marijuana issue.
Marion, Marion, let her speak. You're next.
Okay, anyway, yes, so I don't understand why you bring it down. We really should have two minutes because we weren't bringing up on two and six. Anyway, we gotta stop doing this because you're talking about thousands of people who feel the way I do.
Thank you, Ms. Pierman. Ms. Fogler, now you're up.
I want the two minutes. I'm gonna put this down as a bomb violation.
You got the one minute, start her clock.
You are illegal, illegal period. This is a pure infringement against our civil rights, our First Amendment rights being disabled. You have no right to cut off the Valley and let me weigh more than you. 12 people, 11 people have no say over a million people, 3 million people's voices here. You have no right to tell us, 12 people who have access to millions of people out here in the Valley, to tell me the same thing about what, how they feel about you. You have no right to say 12 distinct people in your, in your, in your committee. How dare you say that, that it's okay to cut us off, to cut this program off? This is illegal, and I'm gonna fight you people. So be ready, because I'm gonna fight the city for more than $45,000. You'll be ready. I will be ready for you. And we want a revolution against this government here. Take it back, marijuana people. Come down here. Come down here and fill this...
Okay, Ms. Fogler, don't break my microphone out there. Okay, Charles, it's only been 24 hours, and I... Maybe if you print it clearer, it would help me get that last name of yours. Because, Charles, I've seen you several times, and it's good to see you again. You'll be followed by Kobe Lopez and Felicia Ford. Go right ahead, and if I could see Kobe and Felicia start making their way. Go on, Charles.
Well, thank you, council, for your time. Very appreciated. My name is Charles Kirkheimer, a lifetime resident in the city of Los Angeles. My name is Charles Kirkheimer, a lifetime resident in the city of Los Angeles. I'd like to say that I suffered a sports injury a couple of years ago, and in taking some prescriptions that were given to me, I chose to turn the other way and go towards medicinal benefits of marijuana. We are here as a community to urge you to join us because we feel as though we need a little bit more of support from our peers as the City Council, as you be. Thank you for hearing me out, and we'll be back every single day. See you soon.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles. Well, Kobe, and followed by Felicia, followed by Nick Simpson. Nick? Yes, sir.
How you doing?
I remember you from the other day, too.
Yeah, I was here on Wednesday. Hope everybody's day is going good. I'm going to hopefully not say the wrong things. I just want you guys to focus, and I want to reiterate what a medical marijuana patient is. I mean, we're all different. Like I said the other day, I'm an eight-year veteran of the military. Now, I'm 100% legally disabled. I believe all my illnesses, seizures, all kinds of neurological problems stem from the anthrax vaccine that I was gracefully issued to by the United States of America. I feel like they made me sick, and the benefits of marijuana are helping me. It helps too many things to make us stop. I mean, Alzheimer's, appetite disorder, arthritis, AIDS, ALS, cancer, diabetes, MS, hydrophagy, sleep disorder, Tourette's, tumors, all kinds of stuff, Hep C. I wish nobody this, but I'm sure some of your kids, when your kid's kids might be born with a problem that's going to require medical marijuana, and you're going to remember this, and you're going to say, "Damn."
Thank Kobe, Kobe, thanks. Felicia Ford, followed by Nick Simpson, and followed by Tanisha Thomas.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Never withhold anything from whom it is due within, when it's in your power of your hands to do it. You have voted on restructuring District 8 and 9 without fairness, judgment, and most importantly, the voice of the people of the community that live and work and have legal residence in the 8th and 9th District. Economic development in that area has been poor for so many years, over 30 years. And funding for beautification and new business, restructuring for business and housing and schools have been, for many, just poorly funded. There's a floating check that you have sent has been in the mail for so many years in developing the 8th District and the 9th District, and that floating check has never arrived. This is not the blame of the City Council that represents those districts, which is Jan Perry and Parks, but I want to say to Mayor Maragosa, please, you must veto this item, and I want...
Thank you. Nick Simpson, Tanisha Thomas, Howard Paris, please come forward, and I want to see... Wait, Tanisha, where are you? Because I know what you look like. Okay, all right, go.
How's it going? All right, well, basically, my story is that I raced motocross from the time I was a little kid, and with motocross comes a lot of injury. It's just part of the sport. You've got to know it, you've got to live it, you've got to get through it. The only thing that helped me was painkillers at that time. The amount of painkillers I was taking would have killed my liver. If it wasn't for medical marijuana and for safe access to medical marijuana dispensaries, I'd probably be dead right now. So keep them open, keep them safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tanisha.
Good morning. Thank you for listening. My name is Tanisha Thompson, and I just want to say I'm so thankful to live in a democracy where I can go as I please and travel. I love the state, I love California. My only wish is that the government would listen to the people. You know, the issue might not affect you, you might not need cannabis, but thousands, hundreds of thousands of people rely on cannabis so they don't get sicker. I need you to really realize that there's power in the people. If the 99% decided not to wake up tomorrow, you know, how would the economy function? So please, just be cognizant that there's more than you. Think about humanity, and we need to take down the 1%.
Thank you, Tanisha. Howard, Howard, followed by Don Ward and Rick Young. So it'll be Howard Paris, Don Ward, and Rick Young. Go ahead, Mr. Paris.
My name is Howard Paris. I'm an engineer, biologist, chemist, and degree in business. I think that the ban, the proposed ban, comes from an attitude of zero tolerance. We've heard that term...
Howard, you're here supportive of keeping accessibility.
Huh?
You're not here opposing Items 2, or 4, 6, because we're not hearing those items today. I'm helping you.
Okay. The Taliban supports zero tolerance. We're fighting a war against the Taliban. Why are we fighting against the Taliban when we have Taliban here in this country supporting zero tolerance? I don't understand that. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see Mr. Ward and Rick Young. Ms. Conti? Go ahead, Mr. Ward.
Thank you, City Council. I'm a neighborhood councilman with Northridge West in Mitch Englander's district, and I wanted to personally thank Mitch Englander for bringing forth the $50,000 reward for the hit-and-run crime committed against the cyclist. That cyclist was not alone. He was... Last year, 1,273 cyclists and pedestrians were victims of hit-and-run crimes. This is an epidemic on our streets. So the issue is, is that we have an LADOT that is engineering freeways through our residential areas, through our urban areas, and encouraging people to speed upwards of 45, 50 miles an hour from red light to red light. We need to change that, and I'm inviting Mitch Englander and Councilman Rosendahl and anyone else that's in support of safe streets to bring forth a resolution calling on the LADOT to stop that madness.
Thank you, thank you. Rick Young, followed by, I think it's DJ Dijay Konti. Yes, sir, Mr. Young.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rick Young. I'm from Occupy LA. We have regrouped since being evicted from City Hall Park. Recently, we reconvened our civic engagement committee. We've been going to City Council Committee meetings, and we hope in the future to work with the city of Los Angeles government to solve some of the problems that we're facing. In regards to marijuana, we're simply asking that you free the plant to do what Mother Nature intended it to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council President. Can we work this out? Dijay Kuti.
Dijay Kuti.
Thank you.
Dijay Kuti.
Good morning, good morning.
I'll probably forget Tuesday, but I'm going to...
We'll work on it, because again, you know, like myself, you'll see me down here often. We're passionate about this, and I know we're taking up your time this morning, and thank you for giving us a minute. We know you don't have to do that, but these are the faces of good people. These are good citizens in your communities. They're taking their time to come down here, and the reason is, you promised us good regulations. That's what you voted for, and now we're going this other direction. And that's why we're going to be down here, and that's why we're going to take up your time, because we're passionate about it. And yes, please, support Councilmember Rosendahl's position in moving forward with looking at state regulation. Mark Leno's bill, Senate Bill 1182, is very positive for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Natalie Marie Hudson, Stephen Austin, is it Daniel Jones? Please come forward, call three names, like to see three people. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Natalie Hudson, and I graduated with honors from the University of Massachusetts Amherst, majoring in legal studies and minoring in gender and sexuality studies. I stand before you today to please consider the resolution presented to you by Dijay Kuti of the Patient Advocacy Network on June 20, 2012. I feel that this resolution protects the rights of the patients, the medical marijuana patients, while ensuring peace and safety within the community. I want to remind you of the fact that any ban on medical cannabis is a violation of the CUA. The people of Los Angeles voted for workable guidelines, and the people of Los Angeles are in support of regulations that protect patients' rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day. How are we, councilmen?
Good.
Good. I appreciate the time up here. My name is Stephen Austin. I just want to give you a background, since I'm not speaking, I'm walking around the topic as you've asked. When I was 17 years old, I was diagnosed with dysentery, dysdisease in my lower back. The fluid, the cartilage, and the calcium in my lower back is deteriorating as I stand here and speak to you. I was told that I could never do physical labor again, and that surgery was available if I would chose that route. Being 17, 18, and a little bit more naive than I am today, I turned to self-medication and street drugs. I am a recovered drug addict, and I stand here today because I'm a medical marijuana user. It helps me get through not only my pain and my tightness in my back from just trying to be a member of society, but it also helps to get rid of the crave and the addiction of drugs. I do appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Mr. Jones, come forward, followed by Tara Yeno.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, City Council members. My name is Daniel Jordan Jones, and one piece of advice for everybody, my dad gave me, said, "Don't worry about it, City Hall gives you the one around, because you're always going to end up right back where you started, right here." He said, "If you're going to come down here and point out the obvious, let the obvious be known. You people have no idea what you're up against." I was at the California State Militia Office yesterday. There's a spy, California State Militia Office. Two helicopters, just like Capricorn 1, intelligence, yesterday, coming in to meet you, just standing in this room right now. The real public threat to this country is the exception that the mayor made when he allowed an occupation to exist in this state. My name, and I quote, this is the California State Constitution, and I quote, "Jared McCall Jones, Esquire." My name is Daniel Jordan Jones. This generation of the Jones family gave law and order to the state of California, and this generation of the Jones family is going to make sure it stays that way. Good day.
Okay, all righty then. Don't break anything. Good morning.
Good morning. Hope everybody's doing good today. I'm Tara Yeno. I just want to come up here and share what I've taken my personal time to do this past week. I've gone and researched how most of the council feels about this ban that we're going to have, how this proposition that's on the agenda, that has many of our patients in our community and a lot of our registered voters, really worked up. And a lot of you take the vow to not say anything, which is pretty original, I guess. And then the ones who have opted to say something really have very openly said that they've not really done any research for any alternative approaches, and that's very unfortunate, because I think that's a terrible representation of your service, your council, your community, and your city. I'm not quite sure what else your job is other than to research other alternatives to things your community doesn't want. Thank you.
Michael Carion, Castro Garcia, Calvin Shorts Jr. Michael, I know you're going to say whatever you're going to say, but remember I told you, if I have to introduce a motion to ban you from doing what? You know what I'm talking about, ban you from wearing shorts, I will. All right, my good friend, have at us.
I just want to make sure you guys understand. I hope you have a little consistency in what you're doing here. You allow council members to come in late and reconsider something, but when we come in, and you're all over the place with public comment, we don't know when it's going to be held, you've got all these awards that you're giving out, pat yourself on the back every day, and we sit here for hours and hours and hours, we turn in the card and we can't speak. Shame on you. If you guys want to do something about medical marijuana, speak to these gentlemen about alcoholism. Maybe they should stop handing out alcohol liquor licenses. But they don't. Every day I come here, there's a new liquor license given out. Downtown LA has 15 new licenses in the past three months. But yet, medical marijuana, I'm a substance abuse counselor, and I don't agree with a lot of stuff, but if it's done right, yes, for medical uses. But I ask this council here, stop going after the medical people who you need it, and go after the doctors who are handing out the cards, and they won't do it. The bogus doctors, they won't fight because they have lawyers.
Thank you, Michael, thank you, thank you. Guys, you've got to keep it down. You've got to keep it down. Michael and I have a unique relationship. I should ask you, Michael, how long did the ceremony take when you won the Medal of Valor? No, don't answer, don't answer. Okay, do I have Castro Garcia or Calvin?
Calvin.
Come on, Calvin.
Hello, I'm Calvin Shorts Jr. Hello, City Councilmen and fellow councilpeople. I'm 30 years old. I do use medical marijuana. It helps me get through the day. It helps me take the rest of the medication that I have to take from the doctors, or else I wouldn't be able to make it. I'm adversary for it, and I am adversary for safe places to do it. I live in a low-income apartment. I can't do it there. Everyone's saying I can smell it on the street, or I can smell it coming out your car. Well, if you give us a spot to do it, maybe you will not smell that. Thank you.
Thank you, Calvin. Castro Garcia, Tyler Adams, Vern Gammon. I called three names, love to see three people. Mr. Garcia.
Good morning, and thank you very much. I'm just going to tell you the reality. LA is going broke. You guys need new taxes, need new businesses. Love giving out license for liquors. Give us a license, we'll pay the taxes. We will help the city grow more. Instead of putting people in jail, just help us grow together. Listen to us, give us the safe access. And I thank Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Garcetti, they're the only ones that look like they pay attention here to us. The rest of you guys are busy, but please, just give us safe access, and we will control it and not let it wander into the streets like drugs do. Just help us, that's all we're asking for, for help. Thank you.
Now, thank you. And just so you'll know, Mr. Garcia, just so you'll know, a lot of times when you look at the council members, they're looking at their computer, their computer screen is showing you, so I've been watching you the whole time, and I'm sure many other members have as well. Anyway, Tyler Adams, Vern Gammon, followed by Jason Fine.
All right, hello, thank you for your time, and I just want to point out, I saw about more than 100 homeless people on the way here. There's crimes going on around everywhere about other drug-related things, and I'm a medical marijuana patient myself, and personally, I've met some of the coolest, most diverse people ever, and everybody's peaceful. There's no crimes, no reason to, you know, to see, I see anybody with negative feelings. And I just feel like if you really want to help the people, you know, we have to help these people out on the streets. This is a nice building right here. All these people need to be in these buildings right now at nighttime while nobody's using it, you know, and all that wasted money, we need to focus it on other stuff, you know, building the community and all that, and school. My brother can't take classes, you know, to go to college, right? You know, like, summer schools are cut off, all that, that's, it's just the stuff like that, and thank you for your time, though.
No, thank you, Mr. Adams, Vern Gammon, Jason Fine, Leslie White, Vern Gammon, Jason Fine, Leslie White. I called three names, I want to see three bodies. Let's go. And if you beat the other person, just identify yourself and go.
My name is Jason Fine.
Go ahead.
I'm here to speak about my father. His name was Mark Fine. Seven years ago, he was diagnosed with a very aggressive form of bladder cancer. At the time, we lived in Arizona. He was treated out there for about a year, and his health quickly deteriorated. Me, my mom, and my dad moved to California, where he was treated at USC Norris Cancer Center, where he did receive better treatment and better medications. Without those medications, the last three years of his life would have been miserable. It truly improved the quality of his life, and he was sick to the point where he was bedridden. He had a plastic urinal at his bed to go to the bathroom. A patient... A patient like that could not grow their own medication. They need safe access provided to them. I appreciate your time and I hope you have a good day.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Thank you. My name is Lindsay White.
Lindsay.
I live in Culver City. Thank you very much for giving me the time to speak to you today. Very simply, all I just wanted to say is thank you very much for giving us more time to discuss with you our rights and concerns about medical marijuana. Also, please help protect this right. It's very needed. Personally, I would not be able to function or live sanely in society without it. This is something we need and please help us protect this right. Thank you.
Thank you. Vern Gammon, Vern Gammon. Okay, going once, twice, all right. Going to take a break from public comment because I have to vote on one quick item. If we can go to item number seven, Mr. Clerk. On item number seven, I have three cards. Here, we have Arnold Sacks, or Arnold, if you can begin to make your way down here, and John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org. And then we have two in the valley. And then we will return back here to complete public testimony. Arnold, let's go to the valley then. Right now, Marianne Fogler, Donna Peerman, let's go to the valley. Go on, Ms. Fogler.
Yeah, I won't have any chance to speak on things like this if you shut off my video conferencing. But I was over there with Donna and it looks good. You're just wasting money so you don't have to keep the video conferencing on. This is just a way of spending and wasting our money. This is a big ripoff. And she says that it's all fixed up. There's no reason why you should be spending money that you should be using.
Mr. President, she is not talking about the Tarzana.
I am so.
Marianne, stay on item seven, please.
I am talking about this. It's very relevant because you're factoring, you're wasting money. You don't have money for services because you're wasting money for something that's already been fixed. It looks good over there and I've been there and it's beautiful. The whole scenery is over there. So there's no reason why you should be doing anything with this.
Thank you, Ms. Peerman.
I go all the time down over there, what they call that Tarzana Safari Walk. And I know, pretty soon I won't be able to say things like this when they shut me off. Anyway, it looks perfectly fine over there. I don't know exactly what you're improving. They have all these things of animals over there and everything's over there. You've got Starbucks over there, you've got Whole Foods. So I don't see that why you're improving an area that looks perfectly fine and there's other places in the city that certainly views it a lot more. It seems to me you're just kowtowing to people who already have money and that's what it looks like to me. And you know, and that's where you think of the valley is, all the expensive. If you're taking away the video conferencing money, you don't think about people that really need it. Instead, you don't think about the places that are poor over in the valley and all you think about. Yeah, this is. You're talking about poor.
Stay on the subject. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Zine, did you push your butt by accident?
No, I didn't. I want to talk. When they get done, I want to talk. Number seven.
Okay, we're not there yet, okay? Now, we've got Mr. Sacks and Mr. Walsh, and then we'll go to item seven.
Yes, thank you.
We're on item seven, they have to speak.
Yes, thank you. It's really amazing that you'd have another bid. Jan Perry honoring downtown, a few bids. The budget for this bid, I mentioned several times, historic Cora had a budget of $1.3 million. Sixty-four percent of it, about $700,000 spent on street cleaning and public safety. And let's not forget, the reason the bids are in existence is to supersede the CRA so that the city doesn't have to maintain the obligations that would be required by community redevelopment. But here's a really interesting story that was in the New York Times from Sunday, 6:17. And then they're talking about realignment in New Jersey. And the story mentions that under state law, only nonprofit agencies can receive contracts for halfway houses. Because you have a non-contract, you have a non-
He is not talking about the Tarzana bid.
You have a nonprofit that's running the bid. That's the point, Mr. City Attorney.
No, just keep talking.
So, the nonprofit in New Jersey is used as a front for the community education to obtain contracts to a nonprofit called Education and Health Centers of America, state record show. So they use the nonprofit as a front to obtain contracts and then they pay the parent company. Well, when you have budgets of a million six or a million three and you only spend thirty-six percent of it on street cleaning and public safety, or excuse me, sixty-four percent of it on street cleaning and public safety, and you should spend thirteen percent of it on management, where's the rest of the money go? And when you have situations where you have eight or ten business improvement districts, here you're talking ten million, twelve million dollars.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org. Mr. Walsh.
That's right. And I promise not to use the M-word once at all. Okay, let me tell for the people out there what this is about. Business improvement districts. This is the way they operate. The property owners pay for the BID and they pass it on to their renters. Now, what they're doing is jobs that used to be done by the government. BIDs are probably best known for their police forces. They're almost all former policemen. This is LAPD types. This is, there's one in Hollywood. They're all over, they're all over this city and parts of the state. Now, I believe what Jesus Christ said, "You shall know them by their works, not what you say, but what you do." And I think that the BID does-
He's not talking about this item.
I was against the BIDs in general. I'm talking about the BIDs, right? Isn't that the subject and why you should vote?
Keep going, John.
Yes. He heckles me even when I'm on his side.
No, just keep going.
In our neighborhood, we had a crack building across the street. The LAPD did nothing, absolutely nothing. They were busy attacking clinics. When we went to the BID, they went to the LAPD and they cleaned out, this is at Yucca and Argyle, take a look at the building, it's seven stories. They cleaned it out, fast. So I'm like Androcles in The Lion. The lion used to like to eat Christians. Then he met a Christian who pulled a thorn out of his paw and then he said, "Okay, I'm not going to eat you because you did me a favor." So the BIDs did me a favor. They got rid of the crack houses. I don't attack them anymore. See you later.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Now, Mr. Zine is on the queue on item seven.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge some folks that are here from the great community of Tarzana. And if you'll please stand and wave. Tarzana, there's only one? Kathy's the only one? Kathy is a, Kathy Delany is a very strong stakeholder in that community. This is the bid of Tarzana in the community of the third district on Ventura Boulevard. The bid is paid for by the business community. It's been very active in maintaining the integrity of the community. It's not a taxpayer-funded bid, so we acknowledge the businesses, and Kathy in particular, for leading the crusade to keep Ventura Boulevard, the Tarzan area, to go with the theme that we have in that area of the southwest San Fernando Valley. So we strongly approve this. Again, there's no tax dollars involved in this. This is, the community businesses helping business in the community. So thank you and thank you, Kathy, for coming down and spending your morning here with us on this very, very important project to help business on Ventura Boulevard in Tarzana. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine and Kathy, thank you for coming down. Members on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. President, there's been a request on that matter forth.
Without objection. Hey, Charles, could you come around? I got a staff guy. I would like to chat with you for two seconds. Okay, now, we're returning to public comment. Boy, I'm having a rough day with names, so I'm apologizing again. I think it's Isaiah Van Chief, Reverend Patrick Duff, I know I got that one. And Maxwell Gale. Called three names, would like to see three people. Sir, go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Isaiah Van Cleef and I am-
Speaking to Mike, Isaiah.
I'm sorry. My name is Isaiah Van Cleef and I am a medicinal marijuana user. Safe access is a necessity for me to function throughout my day. It's hard for me to get around as it is, you know. The medicinal marijuana does help a lot as far as with the side effects with other medications as well. It is, it's just a necessity for me to function. I mean, I would love for you guys to vote no, I guess, on whatever, but, but I'm kind of caught up here. But it is, I'm sorry. I would, I'm sorry, just vote no.
No, it's okay.
I apologize.
No, it's okay. You want to just take a deep breath and finish?
Yes.
Go on, no, don't. You take it, go on.
I'm kind of nervous here.
Don't be nervous.
All right.
I used to be. Don't be.
But yes, it does help me function, so thank you guys for understanding.
No, thank you. Thank you for coming down. Reverend Patrick Duff, followed by, where's Maxwell Gale?
I'm Maxwell.
Okay, Maxwell, where's the good reverend?
He's not here.
Reverend's not here. Okay, is this Kamani Evans?
Yes.
Dow House Dude. Please come forward. Maxwell.
My name is Maxwell Gale. When I was five years old, I was diagnosed with autism. I couldn't look anyone in the eye, I couldn't speak to people, and I had no functional relationships. By the time I was twelve, I had been on six different pharmaceutical medications. By the time I was sixteen, I had been on twelve different pharmaceutical medications. At seventeen, my mother and father took me to get a medical cannabis recommendation. And since then, I've been able to look people in the eye, I've started my own business, I finished high school and I decided not to go to college in favor of starting my own business. There are a couple of issues here that are causing most of the problems. One is people think of cannabis as if it's some type of drug. It's not. It's a vegetable. Our species has been cultivating it for over 7,000 years. In fact, it was possibly one of our first cultivated crops. Another issue is greed. The main reason that cannabis has been illegal is because of our criminogenic justice system. It's simply to take minorities, put them in jail, and then extort the system for money, causing the jails, these corporate jails, to make huge amounts of funds.
Thank you.
How's it going?
Mr. Evans.
Good afternoon. First of all, I'd like to thank the Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for giving me this opportunity to address you. Last summer, I was laid up in the hospital for almost two months with MS. I was, I was diagnosed with MS two years ago, 2010, March 25th. At that time, I didn't know what MS was, but I soon found out. I was unable to do mostly everything that I tried to do before. I could not move my legs, I could not balance myself, I would fall. My daughter, which I was blessed with, 2008, her name is Kamara Aliya Ali.
Finish your sentence.
She, God blessed me with her and gave me the ability to fight. And with these collectives, LBC.
Thank you.
Collective.
But thank you, because see, I can't give you too much more time because, no, because then I would have to give everybody more time. So I'm just trying to be fair. So I need Mr. Dude to come up, followed by Manuel Johnson, followed by Yvonne Michelle Autry.
I do not smoke marijuana. I do not drink alcohol. I do not take prescription drugs. You know why? Because I don't need them. And you know what I'm saying? If you're going to ban any substance, ban alcohol first. That's the worst drug. But that's not what I'm here to speak about. People are noticing that I'm talking about housing. Sir, I gave you a Malibu magazine for you to look at page seventy-six, no, before that.
Mr. Dude, I got it right here.
Ten extraordinary people, ten random questions. They put me with Dane Cook, Jel Cohen, and then Hugley, Paul Gasol, Marcus, Juan Alcalá, et cetera, et cetera. So, some people are not seeing that housing is important.
Okay, Mr. Dude. Okay. All righty. So that was Mr. Dude. We took care of Mr. Evans. Manuel Johnson, Yvette Michelle Autry, followed by, I think I got the middle name, Renato or Renata. Go on, Ms. Autry, and I'm going to get some help with this.
I know, it's been a while, but have you forgotten me that fast? It's Yvonne, not Yvette. Yvonne Michelle Autry, thank you so much.
I'm having a rough day.
It's been over a year. First of all, I'd like to say that while I do not use medicinal cannabis on a regular basis, I'd like to reserve the right to because I know it's about the money-making industry, the pharmaceutical industry. And as a licensed and certified masseuse, I know that the pharmaceutical products do destroy the kidneys. So for those that need it, I'd like to advocate that they can have access to it because I work with people that have pain syndromes and they need to have consistent and constant relief. I'd also like to announce that the government is perpetrating covert and illegal experiments on individuals, causing pain that the medicinal marijuana could also further relieve. Laser beams, microwaves, tasers, especially on people that are outspoken activists like myself, in an effort to debilitate or enable, or in an effort to discourage us. Because when people are suffering, they really do not feel like challenging their local or national government.
Ms. Autry, Yvonne Autry, I will not confuse your name again. Is it Renato?
Renato Lira. My name is Renato Lira.
Wait a minute, hold this time. It was an hour ago. You see how Renato tried to cut the line forty-five minutes? Okay, go on. You are the last speaker on this item.
Wow. My name is Renato Lira. I am the former lieutenant for the Washington DC. Today, we are celebrating our ten-year, finally, our Dream Act has now accomplished with the President Obama. We're really proud of ourselves because we worked so hard, especially me, that it was my baby that I was leading this from Sacramento, Serio, Antonio Chavez, the council members, you know, thank you for, you know, supporting us to this effort. This is the beginning. We are looking forward by November to continue to support more with the Dream Act. One thing I would like to say, thank you to the council members for supporting us, the doctor education, early education arts. As our mayor, our political drama, he didn't support it, he denied it, he sent it back to the council members. This is the time that we need to leave our political on the side, to focus on the right for the community.
Thank you, thank you. And congratulations so far. Okay, that concludes general public comment. Charles, I'm counting on you. Okay, Alan, Mr. City Clerk, what's before this council at this time?
Mr. President, that takes us back to item number four called Special for Councilmember Weisar.
You know, I'm tempted, Mr. Weisar, to hold this item, but I'm going to call on you because you are my brother.
What did I do?
And thank you for this morning, Mr. Weisar.
Oh, I see.
Now you got it.
Just trying to do my job, Mr. President. Somebody's got to do it, somebody's got to stand up.
Hey, you do it, it will.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, this item before you came before the committee and we're not- and when I saw the amendment that was coming for us and realized that this funding had actually finished, I was concerned about the lateness by which the Department of Water and Power brought this item to the committee. We started asking additional questions, and we were a bit more concerned about the process of this procurement to procure trucks for, uh, dump trucks for DWP. Some of the questions we had were cleared up, but others left some concern. Uh, I am recommending that we move forward with it. The work is required and the number of jobs and work that, um, the DWP has. We did ask basic questions as, why are we renting these trucks and paying upwards of about $11 million to rent trucks rather than purchasing trucks? A lot of those questions were asked, answered to our satisfaction. The one thing we weren't satisfied with is the lateness by which DWP brought this contract or amendment, uh, to the council. And we asked that in the future, uh, such does not occur because we need to ensure that we properly evaluate whether or not these amendments are necessary. Uh, the DW says that they have controls in place. For example, the contract administrator is supposed to be notified when the contract hits a 30% balance. And this, in this instance, it had reached zero balance. It says that its supply chain services is supposed to meet monthly to discuss upcoming DWP projects to better predict workload demands. And we are asking that they do a better job of that. So unless any of you have questions for DWP, I am recommending that we move forward. But I did want to bring to all of our attention the need to, uh, properly follow procedures and that these types of amendments do not come to council so late in the process. We were informed that there is a new RFP, uh, going out so that they will, uh, go out and, uh, seek new, uh, requests for proposals for this type of service instead of continuing to amend, uh, this contract. But, uh, just wanted to bring it to all our attention so that we are vigilant, uh, and make sure that the council has its proper time to review these types of procurements. Thank you.
Pardon me, sir. Uh-- Councilmember Weisar, for clarification, you, you then are making a motion to approve the Board of Water and Power Com- uh, Commissioner's report.
So moved.
Okay, I have two cards on that. Columbus Henry?
Mr. President, pardon me before, before moving on, uh, is, is there a second to that?
Mr. Englander has seconded the--
Very good, sir.
Okay, Arnold Sacks and Columbus Henry? Okay, get it-- He's disrupting the meeting, help him.
Columbus Henry?
Yes, sir.
The reason the delay in the award, I mean, the extension of the, of that award is because when they came out with, with the replacement spec, uh, 371, before February 2nd, 2012, they raised the bonding on that for three years as it was a, uh, capital improvement job. Nobody has $12 million of property in South Central or South LA or Beverly Hills, for that matter, they can put up for the underwriters. So we've been protesting that. And since, uh, I know that the bonding can be changed at will since 1989, somebody in, uh, Supply Diversity or, uh, the Division of Fleet Services decided to put, uh, performance bond, payment bond, and bid bond in the works, which eliminated 24 people out of 27 people who were interested in bidding this. So naturally, they only have a seven, 7% return as far as minority participation and local business participation. And we've been fighting this ever since the 15th of February, 2012. And we're, we're just tired of the, uh, the, uh, appearance of some type of collusion. As long as Water and Power staff and Fleet Services or somebody in purchasing does not sign a conflict of interest form like they do with MTA and they do with LA County Public Works, then the, 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 uh, spec process for 037 is nothing but a sham. And it costs us money to bid it, to advertise it, to find a good faith effort to have people join us to perform this project. For the last nine years, since 525 specification, 966, which is ongoing now, and for, um, 731, there was no requirement for a performance bond in the amount of $12 million. So we've been fighting. There's seven of us who was invited to the pre-bid meeting, and we've been fighting them every since. So that's the reason why you have the delay, and that's why the, the thing came out--
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Now, uh, Mr. Labange, you're on the queue. Mr. Sacks, I called you on this. When I come back to you, if you're not at the podium, then you will not be allowed to speak.
I hit my knuckles.
Okay, Mr. Labange is off, uh, the queue. Start Mr. Sacks' time now.
Come on, that's, that, you're being, um, prejudicial there.
No, hold it, hold his time. Arnold, you know what I'm trying to do.
You start my time when I'm not--
I said, "Hold his time." Now, let me talk. I try to run an efficient meeting. When I call you, you like to make an entrance. That's not fair to the other people. If I call your name and you don't come up here, you're gonna forfeit your right to speak, period. Now, this is your time. You can speak to this item, item four.
I can't respond to your remarks, which is totally unfair because I don't--
You want to, you want to talk on four or you want to go home?
I want to talk a little bit on four.
Okay, then go ahead.
Tell the gentleman that, by the way, sir, your item will be passed-- how many people are here, 12 zip? No matter what your problem was, they've decided 12 zip. But actually, I was gonna say, um, does this have any interference? The gentleman was talking about his bid for contract because you passed Nordman's Amendment about the 8% to give local businesses, um, a leg up on contracts with the city? So not only is the gentleman a small business owner, local business, and he still can't get the work done? It just seems so ridiculous.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Labange or you, something-- let's take Mr. Labange off the queue as quickly as possible. Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Clerk, uh, where does that bring us at this time?
That brings us to item eight, called special for cards.
Eight, item eight. Mr. Walsh, please come forward. HollywoodHighland.org, followed by Arnold Sacks on item eight. Mr. Sacks, you may want to work your way to the podium.
Mr. President, as they walk up, can I ask that we have number three go forward forthwith, please?
Without objection. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, as you said. Uh, and, uh, this is number eight, removing properties from REIT. We're all in favor of this. And I think you're doing a pretty good job, uh, city, uh, council president. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Sacks? You're--
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Reprogram for private property. Why you cannot initiate a reprogram for parking lots, again. Councilman Zion has mentioned $33 million owed to the city. But they continue to be licensed, they change names, they get licensed. But you have a program that works for, against public-- who own, people who own property. They get dinged and danged and beat down. Why is the city sit on their hands? Why can't the council move to go after some of these blatant law-breaking businesses that refuse to pay the fees that, that they generate on their way to making a profit? Maybe it's a nonprofit-for-profit type thing.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. If you could, if you could stay close, I'm quick, I'm gonna quickly move to item 11. So on this, uh, item, members, let, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, come on, Mr. Sacks, we are on item 11. We'll go to you first and then we'll go to the Valley for Donna Pierman and Mary Ann Fogler. Mr. Sacks-- Yeah, one minute, I'm told.
All right. Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Just wanted to point out in today's agenda that you spent, um, like, on item, between item 11 and item 26, over $900,000 for salaries from CD BG funds on these two items. And here's an item on 41712. Accept $500,000 in Community Development Block Grant Fund for improvements to unimproved streets in the Los Angeles Harbor Industrial Center redevelopment project area. So you spend $900,000 on salaries and $500,000 on street improvements, which probably includes salaries, and you wonder why the streets don't get improved in the city of LA. So that's like $1.2 million for salaries and $300,000, maybe $200,000 for actually getting work done.
Now we will go to the Valley for Donna Pierman and Mary Ann Fogler.
Okay, succession to Valley, we need to say now. Let's look over this where they're using our money for, uh, the Community Development Block Grant over here. Uh, they certainly know how to use money. They want to increase appropriation for, uh, number one, $443,000, oh, six oh, in one account. And they want to an amount of 150, is number two, 156,940 in account number two. Uh, yeah, it just sounds like another bill for salaries. Decrease 600,000 for, uh, for salaries over in number three. So certainly, you know, you're talking about how poor you are, and I don't know exactly why you're doing this. Oh, and this, after July 1st, of course, after July 1st, of course, is that's when we're gonna be cutting off the video--
Stick on the item, stick on the item.
That's expensive on-- If we can use money like this, certainly you don't have--
If you use it for this, services here.
Yeah, you certainly, you have enough money over there to, uh, they're not as broke as you're saying that every day you come by and you come up with differing things. The spend million dollars on redevelopment, and now this much money on these salaries of these people that's, uh, these CD, uh, Community Development Block Grant. Uh, so certainly, it seems to me that that's why I would like to have the Valleys succeed from the Los Angeles and get away from the city council because certainly you know how to spend a lot of money. I haven't wanting, everybody come down to the Valley and say that we don't, we want, uh, we don't want them to spend money like this all the time. So, uh, I'm totally against it. And of course, I would love to see 12 no's, but of course, I'll never see that in one hell of a free load before I'll see something like that. I say no on it. No, no, no.
Ms. Fogler?
City of LA, let us succeed. This is why we don't want to be part of it anymore because there's outrageous thing that, how they spend the money. We have no control over these monies. They control everything, they're elected dictators. And they tell you how long you can speak, they tell you what you can say. So folks, please, downtown people, let us succeed from them. Please, give us our, give us our liberty and justice, please. Number two, the fact is that they're also gonna cut 35. They can cut this off, they can cut 35. They have no control over people speaking live down there.
Stay on the item.
They have no control over you speaking live.
Okay, Ms. Fogler, you're not speaking on the item. If you don't speak to this item, we will sus- suspend your time. Speak to this item.
You know, I'm trying to help you, okay? I'm trying to get you people back on the right track, but you're not listening to us. You're not putting us back on the air after July 1st.
Speak to the item.
You know, if you wanted to write with these block grants, don't do it to the salaries. Give it to the, the organization that they, that the programs are supposed to be provided for. Stop ripping off the people. Because this is the idea of behind what development grant, I mean, the, uh, the, uh, development grants are for. You're supposed to be providing services to the community. That's what block grants are for, not providing salaries. This is a big ripoff to all of us. And this is the reason why, folks, we want to break off because we have no accountability here, none whatsoever. Okay? I mean, you're right about it, Arnold Sacks. And you guys down there should be speaking out for succession. We need to do something now. We need to take the power away from these city council people and the mayor.
Speak to the item.
Speak to the item.
Please.
Well, I'm just telling you right now, you're gonna make it very hard for me to speak on these kind of items.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, on item 11, let us open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Clerk. In fact, Mr. Englander, did you want-- Mr. Clerk, uh, where does that bring us on today's agenda?
Mr. President, that brings us to, uh, special one. I believe the maker of the motion will speak to the findings.
Okay. Do we need, uh, is the city attorney gonna do it or Mr. Rosendale?
I believe Mr. Rosendale is, sir.
Mr. Rosendale, floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank you for running a good meeting today.
Thank you.
You did a great job on all these issues.
Thank you.
Um, colleagues, I would like to, um, send this, if we could, on a rule 23, um, to the Plum Committee, Mr. Reyes's committee. There's some questions of clarification of language. Today was the last day of action, and I would like your support to just move it to the committee so we can act on it later.
All right. So what's the, the vote on this, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, uh, we, you must first vote on the findings.
Well, let's vote on the findings. Let's open the roll. Close the ro, close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Now what's next? Vote on the item?
Yes, sir.
Let's vote on the item now? Let's open the roll? Close the roll?
Pardon me, sir. Uh, perhaps, uh, if I heard Mr. Rosendale correctly, there is an amendment to be made to the actual motion itself to, instead of vetoing the item, to refer the matter to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
Very good, so, uh--
Okay, let's strike that and let you say what you need to say, Mr. Clerk, and then we'll re-vote, or not re-vote, we will actually vote.
One of the recommendations contained in the motion, uh, vetoed the board's action. And instead of doing so, uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Rosendale would like the matter to be referred to the Planning and Land Use Committee for further consideration.
Thank you very much, that is exactly it, Mr. President.
Mr. Englander?
I want a clarification. I just wanted to know on the council rules, if it even requires a vote, if it's just a motion being submitted to go to committee, does that then require a vote? I haven't heard the findings of the vote. That's, I'm just trying to figure that out. Can I ask the city attorney for an opinion on that?
Deah?
Counsel already voted on the findings. Counsel's the, the body that makes the findings. Um, and now, before them is the actual motion. And the motion is to refer it to committee to discuss the matter further.
Yeah, the first vote was on the findings. Okay, let's, on Mr. Rosendale's motion here, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you, colleagues.
Next, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us--
Mr. Rosendale up to some other devilment? Is that what you're about to suggest to me?
Ye- yes, sir, that brings us to, uh, special, uh, special number two. Uh, it has been circulated, and I believe, uh, the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Just yesterday, the Department of Transportation recalculated its payroll needs for the final pay period of the fiscal year. There is an immediate need to act to transfer $250,000 from the contractual services account to the as-needed account to cover the salary shortfall before the end of today in order to meet the controller's encumbrance deadline. Counsel must first make findings pursuant to Government Code, section 54954.2, before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, let's vote on the findings. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, um, you, you just got in under the wire. Okay, Mr. Rosendale? I'm going to, uh, allow--
Sure, of course.
Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh? I know your card will arrive to me, so-- Okay, John Walsh-- Go right ahead, sir.
Blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, that's why I stay until the end of the meeting. All of a sudden, out of nowhere, you have to vote $250,000 today because by midnight, you'll be in arrears. You'll be technically, what, bankrupt?
You'll be technically, what, bankrupt? This isn't the way to run a city. By special motion at a quarter to one, with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 people here, two, few seconds, and then next week it'll be a quarter of a bill, 100 million or 10 million or 15 million. This is not the way to run the city and I will conclude, I will finish by my remarks by referencing Ron K. La, Zuma Dog, Street Hassel, and Mayor Sam for how not to run a city with a quarter of a million dollars just thrown. Who knows what's going on? HollywoodHighlands.org, it stays to pay to the end.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Rosendahl, did you want to say anything? Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the sake of the record, I, as members know, I typically don't like using rule 23 as a mechanism to vote either. This is, this was imperative that we do this today. This is not an extra expenditure of $250,000 as the speaker suggested. This is a transfer from one Department of Transportation account to another Department of Transportation account simply to allow them to be able to, to meet those payroll needs. So it's, it's a transfer from one line item to another. It's a technicality that needs to be done and it needs to be done before the next pay cycle.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Rosendahl?
I just want to thank Mr. Krikorian for that explanation. I asked for an I vote.
All right. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. President.
Forthwith, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, counsel has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted and referred. Next, adjourning motions. Nope, next is announcements. I think the city, we should congratulate the Miami Heat for winning the NBA championship. And hopefully Kobe and Powell and Bynum are kicking in televisions angry, getting themselves psyched up for next season. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, Mr. President. First, I'd like to take item one, special that we did and forthwith on that as well.
Okay, both of them forthwith.
Okay, I'd like to announce that the Venice Japanese Community Center Summer Festival will be this weekend and on the 23rd, from noon to 10:00 PM and it's in Delray, everybody knows where it is, at 12448 Braddock Drive in Delray, one block west of Sentinel and a half a mile north of the 90 freeway, featuring food, games, dancing, cultural exhibits and demonstrations. It's also Sunday, the 24th, from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Come to Venice and enjoy the Venice Japanese Community Center Summer Festival. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Members, any more announcements? Could everyone in the council chamber please rise for adjourning motions? Mr. Labange?
Members, on behalf of the Loyola High School community, we ask, we adjourn in memory of Charles E. Valente, who was a member of the Class of 46. He lived a good life, but not as long as he should have lived. He passed on the 15th of June. He was a teacher from 1957 to the mid-'70s, also was a track coach, and he was very involved with Loyola activities, including their alumni association. In lieu of, anyone interested in support of Charles' memory, ask to give gifts made to the Class of 46 Scholarship Fund as well as to the Senior Jesuit Care, Care of California for Jesuit Priests. He survived by his wife, his son, daughter-in-law, and 15 grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. Charles E. Valente, a great cub, rest in peace.
All right, other adjourning mo, Ms. Perry?
I would like to adjourn in memory of Fiona Gibson, who worked as a worker for Catholic charities for over 45 years in the 9th Council District. In 1992, she became a program director at El Santo Niño Community Center, a program of Catholic charities that served as a center for community activities, including food giveaways, Christmas celebrations, polling places, meetings, quinceañeras. She did everything and she served in that position continuously until she passed away unexpectedly. Thanks to Fiona, El Santo Niño had a strong community presence and she made sure that everyone who crossed into its, crossed through its doors got the help that he or she needed. She was devoted and had great love for the community. Her love was exceptional and unconditional. She is a beloved icon of the community and because of her willingness to help people in need, she will never be forgotten. She was a frequent advocate for causes that would benefit the residents of the surrounding neighborhood and worked to engage all of her elected officials in every cause. She will be sincerely missed.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Walter Gibson. Some of you might have already heard, but Walter Gibson died suddenly this past weekend of an apparent heart attack. Walter retired last year after more than 40 years of service with the planning department. Walter was born and raised in Los Angeles. He grew up in the Temple Bowery area, attended Belmont High School. He joined the city planning department at a time when there were very, very few African-Americans in the professional planning series and there was significant barriers to people of color. He worked his way up from draftsman to city planning associate, working the final third of his city career as a highly respected zoning investigator, retiring in 2011. Walter, back in the late '80s, when I just started as an associate, he would essentially was very humble, very soft-spoken, but he took the time to show you the ropes. He'd been, already been in office, I mean, working with the office for almost 20 years at the time. And when others would not really coach you, he would take that extra step and give you a sense of, of direction. At that time, the planning department was kind of like a quasi-military operation. People were in their cubicles, they were in their titles and, and you marched a certain way to a certain beat. He was able to give you a sense of, of confidence and I will always appreciate him in my first few days and, and it's sad to see him go, but these are, in my mind, the folks who worked so hard in these halls, spend their careers here and finally fade away. I want to make sure we acknowledge him for his great work.
All members. Mr. Labange?
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, he has another one, Mr. Reyes.
I'd like to also adjourn in memory of Willie Robert Middlebrook Jr. Was a prolific artist and photographer with more than 200 exhibitions to his credit. Willie was born in Detroit, August 11th, 1957, moved to Los Angeles with his family when he was three. His parents encouraged his artistic spirit. Willie studied at Compton College Art Center College Design and Communicative Arts Academy. Willie perhaps most deeply made his impact felt through his generous mentoring of students, fellow artists, and colleagues. He taught at Cal State LA, the LA County High School for the Arts, the Los Angeles Photography Center, the Watts Tower Center for the Arts, Junior Art Center, and Barnes Hill Art Park, among others. He received the highest acknowledgement of his peers, including the Los Angeles Kohla Fellowship, the J. Paul Getty Fellowship from the California Community Foundation, the Brody Fellowship, and two fellowships from the National Domin for the Arts. His artwork is among the collections of many important institutions, including the LA County Museum of Art, the California Afro-American Museum of Art, the Library of Congress, and the Art Institute of Chicago, Smithsonian Institution, and dozens more. Willie completed public art commissions for, among others, the city of LA, LACMA, LA Folks' Arts Program, the Center for African-American Studies at UCLA, and twice for the LA County Metro Art Program, including the new Expo Line Crenshaw Station. Moved by the killing of Trayvon Martin, Willie created a series of photographic paintings which he completed immediately before suffering his stroke. This work exhibited in May at Avenue 50, Studio in Highland Park, which was his final monument to artistic statement. Willie Middlebrook made good on his artist statement pledge to produce great images of my people, not necessarily in a positive light, but always in a true light. Willie will continue to guide and inspire us with truth, beauty, and strength. Willie Middlebrook's survivors include three brothers, five children, and seven grandchildren. A celebration of his life is scheduled for Sunday, June 24th, from 2:00 to 5:00 at the Watts Labor Committee Action Committee at 10950 South Central Avenue. The city of LA is proud to have called Willie Robert Middlebrook Jr. an artist of great talent, of great heart, and one of our own.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted to follow.
Oh, wait, Mr. Rosendahl wants to second Mr. Reyes's motion. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Also, and recognize Leroy Nauman, the great artist in Sports Illustrated and Playboy Magazine and many things that he did. Lived to be the 90-plus-years-old, 91-years-old, married for over 50 years, but such an impressionable artist who would write, who would paint as the event was going on. And additionally, I was, I had a great comment from our Sergeant of Arms in adjourning in memory of Charles Valente. I forgot to recognize he was a reserve LAPD officer for 40 years and two of his sons are currently on the LAPD. Charles Valente from Loyola High School, Class of 46.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any more adjourning motions? Members, this council session is adjourned.